Welcome to the Monday, January 27, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting for Radnor Township. If you will all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before getting started this afternoon, I'd like to note that the board met in executive session immediately prior to our meeting now to discuss issues of personnel and one litigation matter, which is currently doctored at CI-18-07146. Do we have anybody here from the League of Women Voters? Wow, okay. Could somebody who can actually pick up a plaque come down to the front? Is that better? Nope. Still not good?
No.
Okay, we're gonna say this works. First off, thank you very much. I have the following proclamation and plaque. Celebrating the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters of the United States
And of Radnor Township.
And of Radnor Township, we're 100 years old. Whereas, the League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 as a mighty political experiment by the four mothers of the suffragist movement of the National American Woman Suffrage Association, and whereas their goal was to help the 20 million women who were granted the right to vote by the 19th Amendment understand and carry out their new responsibilities as voters, and whereas with the success of this effort and the tireless efforts over the last 100 years to strengthen and uphold its mission to empower voters and defend democracy, the League has become a trusted, nonpartisan, grassroots organization, and whereas the League has sponsored legislation and fought in the courts to protect and strengthen voting rights and access and for free and fair elections, civil rights, children, community health, and education, and whereas the League has consistently been noted for its nonpartisan election information, including sponsorship of candidate forums and information on state and local ballot issues, as well as its commitment to register, educate, and mobilize voters, and whereas the League champions government systems that are open, transparent, inclusive, and equitable, and whereas the League believes that active and engaged citizens irrespective of gender, ethnicity, or political affiliation are the hallmark of democracy, now therefore be it proclaimed February 14th as League of Women Voters Day in Radnor Township. We honor and congratulate the League of Women Voters on its 100th anniversary and commend the League for its significant contributions to empowering voters and making democracy work. So, first, have the plaque.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to thank the Radnor Township staff and community for all their support of our efforts in helping to make democracy work. It takes a village. Thank you.
Thank you. Radnor Township residents are encouraged to give public comment relevant to items on the current agenda during the first public comment period. Comments relevant to matters not on the current agenda should be held for the second and final public comment period. All comments are limited to five minutes. Sir, step on up.
Well, mine isn't on the agenda other than indirectly. My name is Charles Barber. I live at 228 Hilldale Road in Villanova, Ward 2, Precinct 2. I think that what has been done to this hill near the exit of the Blue Root is just outrageous. And I cannot imagine that any of the commissioners would be very happy about it. And I can't imagine that there's someone who works for this township who lacks so much understanding of the people that live in this township that they don't understand how outraged we would be with this event. And I would like to have an item placed officially onto the agenda next meeting so we can discuss this fully and openly, and we can find out some answers of how this abomination occurred.
Hello, I'm Lorna Atkinson, and I'm here representing the Radnor Conservancy on the same topic. We have submitted a letter to the Board of Commissioners as well, which I'm just gonna read to you this evening. We are here to raise concern over the clearcutting of the four-acre parcel of land that abuts Route 30 and Route 476 in Radnor Township. I think we can all agree that management of township land is a huge task, and it's also a great responsibility that should be planned in collaboration with all relevant groups, including Shade Tree Commission, Environmental Advisory Council, not to mention township residents, and of course, the Board of Commissioners. In advance of the clearcutting and to the best of the Radnor Conservancy's knowledge surrounding the issue, there were no public meetings held, or township committees got the chance to vet the plans, and no post-clearing plans were submitted. The intention to carry out a project of this type and scale should be communicated in advance to allow time for questions and consultation and demonstrate transparency. We're seeking assurance that this will happen in the future and that recent events will not be a precedent for how township deals with projects like this going forward. While it seems that township taxpayer funds weren't used, agreement on the spending of funds managed by the townships, we feel should have been sought. Clearcut removal of invasive trees and plants requires a plan to prevent their return and to deal with erosion afterwards, and we ask what the plan is for replanting and if there are funds remaining in the Radnor and Hartsburg Community Trust to finance this plan. There will now be a direct cost to designing, planting, and the ongoing maintenance of this parcel. And let's not forget that there was a direct benefit of the vegetation on the hillside. We've lost stormwater management and erosion control, habitat for birds and animals, and trees working to clean the air, cool the roads, and buff our highway noise and pollution. All of these benefits are now gone. On behalf of the Radnor Conservancy, please help to assure our community that there'll be better collaboration and clarity on these types of issues in the future. Thank you for your time.
I'm Cindy Spirtle, and I live on Valley Forge Terrace in Wayne. I'd like to take a minute, a break, for I know what most of the people are here for. It's come to my attention today that someone who's been attending these meetings for many years in the past, this is her last week here, and that's Linda Stein. And I would like to take a minute to say thank you to her for the excellent reporting that she has done all of the years, that she has attended both the Radnor Commissioners meetings and the School Board Committee meetings. And she's been an excellent reporter, ethical, above-board, even-handed with both parties, an excellent reporter, all the facts, because I watch the meetings, as well as a lot of members of this township. And I also attended all the School Board Committee meetings for many years. And she has done a fine job. The township is going to miss her because not everyone attends these meetings, not everyone watches them on TV, but for the many years that Linda's been covering the activities of this township, the people in this community have known accurately exactly what has been going on. So I would like to say thank you to Linda, and I wish everyone the best.
Mr. President, I hope at a not-too-distant meeting that we will be honoring Linda Stein with a plaque as well for her coverage of the township.
I'm Jane Golis. I live on West Wayne Avenue in the 6th Ward. And I too want to like, want to thank the 4th Estate for being here. But I'm here, I was a former chair of the Shade Tree Commission, so I guess I'm a duly-recognized tree hugger. And I was just, I guess, sort of shocked when all the trees were taken down, and I was sort of amazed at how that came about because no one seemed to know. So I think that Radnor has in place some great procedures for people that are doing land development, the Planning Commission, the Shade Tree Commission, the Environmental Advisory Board. And residents serve on those boards to help residents, private property owners, and the township. And I would hope that the township would take advantage of these boards now with any planning scheme that they have for this site between the two exit entrance ramps, that it will be more 2020 and not 1988, and that it will be done in a sustainable way for the future. And we should also remember that Chanta Clear, one of the foremost gardens in the world, is in Radnor Township. And perhaps we could also seek their advice on a good planting scheme for this area. But again, I think we should use our boards that are in place for large landscape projects.
Dan Sherry, Wayne. I'm very saddened to hear about Linda Stein apparently not continuing on as a reporter in Radnor Township. To echo Cindy Spirtle's comments, it is hard to be knowledgeable about what is going on in Radnor Township if there is not good reporting. And in fact, this dovetails quite well with what I think is a very, very ill-considered resolution that's on the agenda tonight about not televising and videotaping township meetings. Get to that in a bit. But when people are not aware of what is going on, the likelihood of mischief exponentially increases. I am not going to be limiting my comments tonight at the start of the meeting for things on the agenda because there's no legislation backing that up at all, Mr. Larkin. This is a chilling effect to try to put some level of confinement as to what opening comments can be about. Now, I attend quite a lot of meetings, and this is just going by memory, but the last person to attempt to pull this type of stunt insofar as limiting public comment at the start of the meeting was the disgusting convicted criminal pervert Bill Spingler. He tried that, too. And I asked him, when he was president of the Board of Commissioners, what legislation do you have backing that up? And his response, kind of a mumbling response, was, "Well, that was an Elaine Paul Schaefer tradition." Elaine Paul Schaefer, as you might know, Mr. Larkin, one of her last acts as a Radnor Commissioner was to keep the disgusting convicted and sentenced criminal pervert Phil R. on as a Commissioner.
Limit your comments to what is on the agenda, Mr. Sherry.
No. You show me legislation backing that up that you can limit me. Do it. I dare you.
Mr. Sherry, it's the Sunshine Act. Please limit your comments to what's on the agenda.
There's no legislation backing it, so I will not.
Please.
And even if it was, I'm limiting it on to what's on the agenda in terms of what you chose to put on the agenda. So there, Mr. Larkin, you're undone by the own language that you put on the agenda.
If Schaefer's not on the agenda, please limit your comments to what's on the agenda.
Nope. I will not, I do not need to. What you need to do, Mr. Larkin, is if you want to change substantively how Radnor Board of Commissioner meetings are handled insofar as limiting public comment at the start of the meeting, you need to come forward with some legislation, and you need to pass it. Maybe it's a resolution, maybe it's an ordinance, but you have to do that. Now, we can speculate as to why you haven't done that, and why instead you're trying to revive something from the Bill Spingler Elaine Paul Schaefer era, but the fact remains is the Sunshine Act existed back then, and it wasn't given as an excuse. What was given as an excuse was Elaine Paul Schaefer did it. That doesn't count as governing law with me. It shouldn't count as governing law.
Commissioner Schaefer is not on the agenda.
Why are you interrupting me?
Please limit your comments to what is on the agenda.
It's written on the agenda.
Please moderate your tone.
Here's what you, please moderate your position. Here's what it says. "Radnor Township residents are encouraged to give public comments relevant to items on the current agenda." That's encouraged, not commanded. I disregard your encouragement. Also, number four, Radnor Township Commissioners are afforded five minutes to express appreciation for exemplary work by staff, contributions to the public good by residents, and local organizations to publicize upcoming meetings and events, or in rare cases, to respond briefly to public comment? That in the Sunshine Act, too? Where are you pulling this from? This hasn't shown up in any other agenda. I looked. It's not there. The Sunshine Act isn't new. Don't toss out at me ridiculous excuses. If you want to change something, have the courage of your convictions. Now, I can speculate as to why you haven't done that. I think it's probably because you have a problem substantively supporting your positions, like for example, when you refused to censure John Nagel for cracking off at the mouth at a federal sentencing hearing.
Commissioner Nagel is not on the agenda either. Please limit your comments to what is on the agenda.
I am. I'm talking about items two and four on the agenda for the third time, Mr. Larkin. Stop interrupting me. If you want to substantively change, if you want to substantively change how a meeting is occurring, you need to bring that forward as legislation. Have some courage. Don't be timid. If you think that you can get people to go along with keeping people's comments limited at the start of the meeting, bring in some evidence. Show how meetings are better run as a result of that happening, rather than trying unilaterally to attempt this type of nonsense. It's shameful. It's the same level of shame that is also, "And now we're looking at our watch. First we were looking at the agenda, realizing it's on it, now we're looking at our watch." Still have a little time left, Mr. Larkin. Take this seriously, because I'm gonna point out procedurally how wrongful you are, and how if you felt you were right, you would pass legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry. Your time is up.
You're welcome.
I'm Christina Peters, 429 King of Pressure Road in Radnor. I want to echo the concerns about the clearcutting of the four-acre parcel, the environmental concerns, but also just the, as a taxpayer who's paying fees for stormwater management, who's looking at tree giveaways, who's looking at the goals of this township, to have such a thing done, burdening our streams, burdening the stormwater infrastructure without any discussion, without any accountability, it's very distressing. Thank you.
I'm Cheryl Tumola, 411 Midland Avenue. I'm also here to talk about this event, which has been a shock to the community, I think you all know that. I was on the Planning Commission when the Gateways Enhancement Trust was proposed and Each and every action that was proposed by them was based on the comprehensive plan and thoroughly vetted by the Board of Commissioners and the citizens. I would like to know how we got here from there, how this group that had been an outgrowth of a system that showed that we had an overarching, long-range plan for how to handle the Blue Root, and this was started before the Blue Root actually opened. And that's how we got the care and the griffin, all the other things that we have, the trestles, everything that we have. And it has made us a distinctively better interchange and better-looking community than any other Blue Root interchange. So this is really a blow to our prestige and what we present to the world, and I'd like to see that it never happens again.
I'm Chip Addus, 511 Askin Road in St. Davids. As all of you well know, I have some serious concerns about what occurred over here at the Blue Root, and I think, I sent you all a list of about 12 different questions that I have, and I'm sure there will be many more that follow if we ever get answers to those 12 questions. But I think it really boils down to, number one, who signed off on this? Who allowed this to happen without consulting any other advisory board in the township? Who allowed this to happen without consulting the Board of Commissioners? And what are the consequences gonna be for the person who did or did not sign off on this? Because as Cheryl just said, this should never be allowed to happen again, and clearly there's a complete breakdown in terms of how decisions are made with regard to a project like this in the township. So thank you for allowing us to come up here and talk about this issue, but we've gotta, we've gotta get to the bottom of what happened before we can think about how we're gonna replant 30 years of growth on top of a hill at the Blue Root Interchange. We now all have to look at a sound wall as opposed to a lush, green bed of trees that really provided a lot of good, both aesthetically as well as environmentally. Thank you.
Seeing no additional public comment, we will move on to the consented...
Did I have a comment?
Oh, sorry.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak. My name is Frank May. I live at 227 Lenore Avenue, and I would like to speak regarding the resolution pertaining to the West Wayne Avenue Trail Connection. And I and many of my neighbors who could make it tonight on such short notice for our resolution being on the agenda are here. We are opposed to the Trail Avenue Connection for many reasons. I moved to Wayne many years ago to 227 Lenore Avenue, where I was a tenant for eight years before purchasing the home from the landlord. It's a storybook community where we have singles, twins, and a very diverse range of economic, economics on our street. The owners at the end of the street, closest to where the trail would connect, do not have driveways. And in fact, in our neighborhood, we have six, six new baby girls under the age of one year old, and those families at the end of the street don't have driveways and have multiple children. So the Trail Avenue Connection would really cause a lot of extra traffic and congestion. The home that I live in, we park one car in our driveway and one car on the street. We join several neighbors' properties where we cut down all the bushes in the front in between so the kids can run from one end of the street to the other. It's a storybook neighborhood with little traffic, but we struggle to park our cars. When the college kids come home for the weekend, we get parked out, but we have a friendly arrangement, and nobody gets in any spiffs because we work together. And we hope that you will consider the fact that adding the trail access would really change the total dynamic of our neighborhood, where we have children running freely because we trust our neighbors and have little traffic. Now we will have strangers parking on the street. So kids throwing the football will now have to have a parent chaperoning them instead of just being able to run free like the storybook town that Wayne is, and the reason why it lands in magazines as one of the top places to live. We go to the Fourth of July Parade, we walk into school, our children walk to the middle school, and we walk to the Wayne Elementary School as well. Soon they'll be old enough to ride their bikes, but they're not crossing the street at Conestoga at Lenore. When we stand there at the bus stop in the morning, there is always a parent there diligently making sure we don't throw the football at the corner because cars are whizzing by. Adding an access point there is not gonna stop people from riding a bike and cruising across the street. I went to the University of Delaware, someone I was close with was killed riding their bike across the street at a similar access point that had the blinking lights where students were to cross a double-yellow line road. We're seriously opposed to the project. I appreciate you hearing my concerns this evening. Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm seeing I'm making you yawn, Mr. Booker.
Oh, that's not, that's not at all.
I know it's a long night, and a few of my neighbors would like to speak as well, so you might want to drink some more of that coffee. All right, thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
I was a little surprised we were done with public comments so early. I'm not surprised now.
I'm J. Douglas Carroll. I'm from 218 Lenore Avenue. And like Frank, I'm a neighbor of Frank's. I've lived on Lenore Avenue for over 30 years. Walked my children down to the corner that we're talking about on Lenore and Conestoga. Walked my dog around that corner a number of times. There is never a good time to be crossing Conestoga Road at that point. It's just, it's just a bad idea to put an access point in at that location. It's, the cars come down very quickly, and they're all trying to make the light up on West Wayne Avenue, and it seems there's, there's little regard for any pedestrians at any time at that intersection. And I also want to say that there's a perfectly good access point to the trail with a, with great parking facilities, it's handicapped access, and it's, it's been used by everybody all directly across from where this access point will feed into. So I, I think that the access point idea is, while it may be well-intentioned, I think it's a bad idea, and I don't think that we should proceed with this, this point, at this, at this point. I think it should be either moved or we could take the money and make the access point up towards where, where West Wayne Avenue crosses. It's already got a light there, it's got, already got the handicap dudas, and the access point is already, to the trail is already established and very well-received. Thank you.
I'm Damian Marabiro. I live on 230 Lenore Avenue as well. My neighbors Frank and Doug, you just heard, I concur 100%. What a crazy and idiotic idea to have a trail access at the end of our street when there's one 250 yards to the left and 1,000 yards to the right. What an unbelievable gross waste of money. Why would you put a crossing at the Conestoga Speedway at the end of Lenore Avenue? Anyone who's at all familiar with that road, they're accelerating away from that light heading towards Lancaster Avenue, and from Lancaster Avenue, they're accelerating to go to that light. When one of the little girls gets hit by a car and dies, will anyone in the Commissioner here be responsible for that? What a crazy and stupid idea this is. Why would you put in additional access when there's perfectly great accesses on either side? It flies in the face of common sense and logic. It makes no sense. Why would you bottleneck a one-way street which already struggles with parking at the end of the street that's a family community, a family street, and make it even worse? It makes no sense. Those houses at the end of the street have no driveways. The last eight houses where you will bottleneck it in to create the access have no parking. The only parking they have is on the street, and you want to take that away? It flies in the face of logic. It makes no sense. The pure safety issue alone should scare everyone who sits in these seats, right? It is a Speedway there, trust me. I have kids that are now 25 years old, all three of them, who we took to the bus stop, every one of us sitting back there at the end of that street, and watched the Speedway going on. It's hard enough for, when the buses stop, for cars to even honor that. We all had to wait until the bus stopped and watch the last few cars try to get by it. Crazy idea. So again, I plead to the Commissioner here and the Township that this is a crazy idea. There's gotta be a better way to spend that money. Enhance the accesses that are already there that have safe parking behind the veterinary hospital, the one behind the car wash, I forget the name of that street that has there.
Gallagher.
Gallagher. Why not just improve those accesses? It makes no sense to create a one-in-between two very functional and safe ones, and you're gonna create a, a crossing at a Speedway, literally it's a Speedway on Conestoga, for one of our children to get killed. It's crazy. Thank you for hearing us.
Matthew Marshall, 228 Walnut Avenue, former Planning Commissioner and former interim First Work Commissioner. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the Gateway Enhancement District, and I understand Linda's here, so I appreciate her work. She's actually covered this subject matter with, I think, fairly comprehensive articles, so I don't want to kind of get into what just happened, but I wanted to explain to some of the new Commissioners what was written back in February of 2018, so just less than two years ago. less than two years ago. When, um, I came to the board back in 2016, I had this concept of improving the gateway, and I thought the gateway should be an extension from, uh, Route, uh, 320 Spole Road all the way to the west to Banbury and Wayne. Uh, we know that the good work that Villanova has done, uh, you know, to improve their, their campus has really benefited Radnor Township. But this, this gateway, uh, where the intersection of Route 30 and the 476 on-ramps, um, I, this should have never happened in terms of what just occurred. And Linda, uh, quoted me back in, in, uh, 2018, and she said, or I, I said to her, "The Gateway Enhancement District is a visual reflection of Radnor Township's natural beauty, strong commercial, academic, and government leadership. The district will accentuate a welcoming reputation, natural aesthetics, quality of community valued by Radnor residents." Last two words of the first sentence, "Government leadership." What happened to the government leadership when we're clear-cutting four acres at our front door? Can, can any of you speak to that tonight? How that happened? Um, secondly, we have a, a vibrant business community that is under stress because of taxes, and to have this become the front door when many business leaders come to visit Radnor to decide whether they want to locate their businesses here, or Concha Hocken, or King of Prussia, this is just not a good reflection of the township. So, I have some ideas, uh, about how we go forward. I heard someone in the audience say, "You shanticleer." Um, I've, I've commented to, uh, Vice President Browski that there are two graduate schools of landscape architecture in Philadelphia, including University of Pennsylvania and Temple. I implore you to have this, um, plan in place quickly, hopefully in time for the spring growing season, because what's there now just, just doesn't reflect Radnor Township. Thank you.
I'm Tim Holman, 216 Lenore Avenue. Uh, there's already been a lot of talk about this issue, so I won't spend a lot of time tonight. Uh, but I, I do just want to first thank the commissioners for putting on, on the agenda the idea of, of having a study to determine whether it would be better to, uh, run the connection, this proposed connection from, which I gather, from essentially from the train station which goes out West Wayne to have it continue out West Wayne and across to, down to the existing, uh, access point. Because, as has already been discussed here, you know, the, the plan, and, and I guess, I want to say that it's still a mystery, I think, to everyone who lives on Lenore Avenue as to how this, this plan, which as I understand it, is, it cannot be undone from what I'm hearing, is that, you know, there's been a plan approved that creates this access point at Lenore Avenue. And I, I don't believe there was ever any notice to the, the residents of Lenore Avenue that that was happening. There was a time when there was talk about having a, uh, a bike lane down Lenore Avenue onto, that, that would have connected to, I guess, this access point, and there, and neighbors came, and this is a couple of years ago, and, and that was, uh, so it was decided that that would not happen. But what no one ever said was, "Well, but although we're not going to have people go down the street, by the way, we are still going to have the access point at the end of your street." And so, you know, you're creating an access point to a trail and, with zero parking for it. Uh, and, and in an area where parking is a tremendous problem. Um, and, and as, and Conestoga Road is absolutely a very dangerous stretch of road right there. And so, and under the current plan, as I understand it, you're asking people to go up West Wayne, and particularly people on bikes, to go up West Wayne, make a right onto Conestoga, which is actually a pretty narrow road, and particularly in light of the, the speed that cars travel down it, ride their bike on that road without a bike lane at all. They're going to put, the, I was at a prior meeting where they said, "I'm going to put so-called sharos on the road," telling people, "Oh, share the road with bikes." And so, you know, I will never be on that road on a bike, ever. And I would never let any child or any person I cared about do that. Uh, I, I believe somebody is going to get killed down there. Uh, and so, thank you for listening. Have a great night.
Hi, I'm Leslie Bosniak, 228 Lenore Avenue. Just wanted to share something with you just on a different aspect of the Lenore Avenue issue. Um, yes, safety is an issue, but protecting the land itself, the wildlife, the preserve is there as a preserve. Opening up access to Conestoga Road is a concern to me in particular, um, in protecting the preserve. I sometimes see beer cans and trash in my hedges. I'm a half a block away from the preserve. The activity that causes that could move to the preserve, move to the preserve overnight and damage the preserve, the wildlife, um, the plant life that's there. To me, um, from an environmental and, and protection of the wildlife and, um, the plant life that is on the preserve, it makes a lot more sense to me to have the entrance to the preserve not be accessed by Conestoga Road, but really from the trail. Thanks.
Is there any further public comment?
Hello, everybody. Joe Garzio, 225 Lenore Avenue. As you can see, it's pretty unanimous, our opposition to this. I don't think you could find one person on Lenore Avenue that feels that this is a good idea, and I would just like to add my voice, it is a very, very unsafe idea. Before you do that, just do me one favor. Stand at the end of Lenore Avenue on Conestoga and witness the Speedway. If it's going to be done, you have to put in something. I know it probably is not allowed, like a speed bump, but it is unbelievably unsafe at the end of that block. I got two young boys, and they aren't allowed to, if they're going to try to go to Otricio, they're not allowed to walk down to the end of Lenore Avenue and turn left. They in turn have to go around the whole block and cross Conestoga in front of the Italian-American Club. That's how, that's how bad that intersection is. So, if you could, please, before you make that vote, just stand at the end of Lenore Avenue for five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda.
Mr. President, I'm not sure if at this point it would be appropriate to respond with the tree issue at the interchange, or would you like me to wait till after the consent agenda?
Let's wait until after consent agenda and put in a commissioner comment.
Thank you.
Is there any item other than 3C, which I've already gotten a request for to remove? Is there any item that staff would like to remove from the consent agenda? Is there any item from the consent agenda that the commissioners would like to remove?
I, I have one. I have several.
I'd like to remove items I, J, L, M, N, and O.
Okay, please speak to item I. Resolution number 2020-09, Bo Connor and Philippone Parks Project authorizing the payment of change orders 11, 12, 13, and 14, the amount of $65,388 to Guesser Construction, Inc. ISO move. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Booker, you are the person who wanted to know about it. What do you want to know?
May I have a description of the items and, um, the reason for the change order?
Mr. President, I can take that. Commissioner Booker, Booker in the packet, um, under 2020-09, there is an outline of the change orders. Uh, at Bo Connor, one, and at Warren Philippone, was installed wing fencing at the dugouts at both parks, and a 10-foot extension of the fence on the third base side of the Bo Connor South Field. These were done, uh, based on requests by the Little League. Uh, the next one is install swing gates at the dugouts at both parks and a pedestrian gate at Bo Connor Park, similar situation. Dugout fencing, again, with the Little League. The largest portion of that was the parking lot undercuts, so, uh, after the parking lot was roto-milled, I proof-rolled it, and in the areas where we proof-rolled it, I physically marked areas that failed that had to be undercut. And, uh, it was considerable, and I think that's pretty obvious by the condition of that parking lot prior to this work. It was in very bad shape, ponding, cracking, rutting, deterioration. So, that, that's a, a brief rundown of those change orders, sir?
So, the majority of it is the undercut and, and site work associated with that?
Close to half, sir. $31,070 for the undercut. Um, the balance is the various fencing additions.
Is there any additional commissioner comment?
Is there, yeah, is there, is this the end, or is there more to come for these two projects?
Yeah, that should be it, sir, for the Bo Connor, Warren Philippone projects.
Thank you.
Is there any additional commissioner comment on this issue? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Issue passes seven to zero. Moving on to item J. Resolution number 2020 of 11, authorizing the receipt of sealed bids for the Conestoga Road Tunnel Lighting Project. ISO move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Mr. Booker, this is your question.
Um, again, could we have a, an estimate of the cost of this at this point and, um, a brief description of the, the project?
Mr. Nercini. Commissioner Booker, this, uh, is actually the outcome of a lawsuit that occurred with a cyclist under that bridge, and although the township was not found to be, uh, on the wrong side of that lawsuit, it was determined during those proceedings that the township needed to maintain and upgrade the lighting under that tunnel, and that dates back to sometime prior to anybody here when the township did some work on that lighting. Uh, and I'm going to, I'm not going to speak in legalese, but basically, we touched it, we bought it. So, we were, we are required to bring that up to current PennDOT standards for that tunnel, which it does not have right now.
And what's the anticipate, what's the range of estimated cost?
Hang on one second, sir.
Mr. Nercini, isn't one of that, one of the, uh, this one of the projects in the bond?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, this is going to be in the 200,000-plus-dollar range.
And that's consistent with the original estimate for the bond financing?
Yes, like, I can't speak to the bidding climate which we are in right now, which is not favorable to owners, but that's somewhere in that range.
We'll find out when you bid it, though.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, item L. Request to go to bid on the purchase of 220 Harley-Davidson...
We've got to vote on it, though.
Yeah, and, and, I, I'd like to make a, make a comment about that, because that is my work. So, is that, um, I guess, Steve, um, Nercini, is that ADA, uh, accessible?
So, it's, this specific...
Which it's not, it's not. I'm asking, I'm asking you a loaded question for obvious reasons.
This specific project deals solely with lighting. We've been in contact with PennDOT about the, the access...
Well, if PennDOT wants us to do that, shouldn't they make it, shouldn't we say, "Sure, but let's make it ADA accessible"? People, moms with strollers, because that is extremely, an extremely dangerous underpass, especially if you hit it at the right time of day, usually in the morning, that sun glare, I mean, you are blinded when you go underneath there. Um, I mean, obviously, we'll vote for it, it's got to get fixed, but it just seems extremely inequitable.
Understood. Is there any additional commissioner comment?
I'll, I'll agree with Commissioner Fari on that. If, um, if there's a safety concern there, we should be doing everything possible, working through the state to try to address that issue.
I believe, Commissioner, we've spoken to PennDOT, and PennDOT said it's not supposed to be a pedestrian route underneath that bridge, so we can try to get something in writing, if you'd like, from PennDOT. Ask them that to make it handicap accessible and then have them put it in writing that said it's not supposed to be any pedestrian traffic underneath there, because when they replaced the guardrail in there, it was so bad, we actually asked them to make corrections to that, and they said there is to be no pedestrian traffic underneath that bridge. Well, I, we'll go back with them and make that request to make it ADA accessible, and if they say there's to be no pedestrian traffic, we'll bring that back to the board, and then we'll take your direction on how to go.
I believe there's a sidewalk that would lead, lead up to that.
It does, but it goes, it goes to nowhere.
So, I mean, that's... Is there a sidewalk that leads on one side of the underpass or the other?
It does, and then there's only asphalt underneath, so it's not technically a sidewalk, but we'll ask them for a response, and then we'll bring it back to the board with their response.
Is there existing signage that says that there's no pedestrian, there's to be no pedestrian traffic underneath there?
We'll, we'll look at that, and we'll see.
Thank you.
We'll bring that back to you.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Hearing none, I'm going to call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Moving on to item L. Request to go to bid for the purchase of two 2020 Harley-Davidson police motorcycles.
Let's take, uh, if you, if you would indulge me, President Larkin, let's take L and M in one. Uh, my question on these is, are they, are these two Harley-Davidson motorcycles and two new police department vehicles in the current budget for this year?
I'm going to go to Bill, and then we'll move for their introduction.
Yes, that is a, Commissioner, that is in our 2020 capital budget allocation for vehicles listed under the police department.
And is there more for this year, or is this, is this it?
That is our only, uh, request.
And what's the total cost for these two?
The, the motorcycles, sir, are going out to bid, so I don't have the exact final. Um, our budget allocation is, uh, $50,000. Also, two of them will be traded in for a replacement, in other words, two for two, if that's answering your question, but I don't have the quote for that because we have to get permission to go out to bid. And then, the budget allocation for the police fleet is $80,000.
So, the two that are...
Sir, I apologize, 92. I looked at the wrong line.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
$92,000.
$92,000. For, for two vehicles? Not each?
Two vehicles.
Two vehicles. So, the, the trade-in will offset the cost for the motorcycles?
The trade-in's expected to defray the cost so that the, the net cost after the trade-in...
Will be 50.
Be no more than $50,000. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
I'll move for L and M. M being Resolution Number 2020-16, authorization to purchase two vehicles for the police department. Is there a second for both L and M? I'm calling the vote on L only first. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Motion passes seven to zero. I'm calling the vote on M. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Motion passes seven to zero. N. Resolution Number 2020-17, authorizing directing the township managers to submit the application for signal, for traffic signal approval to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for North Wayne Avenue, State Route 1046, and Eagle Road, State Road 1042, on behalf of Radnor Township. ISO move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Rich, this is you.
Again, on this, I would like to get a description of the project so that the public is aware of this new light and, um, an estimated cost.
So, Commissioner Booker, this is a project that was previously approved by the board. It is the sidewalk project on North Wayne Avenue from Woodsworth Court through to Eagle Road. As part of that, and Gilmore is doing our design, as part of that, we have to upgrade the signal at that intersection. And, uh, as has been before this board many times before, there is the ubiquitous TE-160 form that has to be filled out, which basically says the township will own, operate, and maintain the signal to those specifications.
It's an upgrade, it's not a replacement, it's not a new signal?
Uh, there, there will be, uh, I think, a new pole and mast arm, but it, the project is not an intersection project, the project is a pedestrian project. To make it safe to cross for pedestrians, we have to do the ADA ramps, and there's some modifications to the, uh, intersection signal.
So, is there a, a new signal going in in this place, or is it a change in the existing signal?
It's just a change in the existing signal.
So, what do we have there right now?
Well, if you go there, there's no, you know, when you go to an intersection and you see the extended, uh, bars with the push button, we don't have all those ped buttons, hand man, none of that's there.
Okay, so it's putting, so that you can control it, but it's not, and not a new signal for, for the vehicles?
No, sir.
Okay. And what's, what's the, and this is the application for a grant?
No, this is the TE, as part of the project, so we're already deep in design with Gilmore. Um, as part of the project, we've done this several times before, once we touch this signal, uh, we have to come up to speed with the TE-160 form from PennDOT, which says the township's going to maintain this in, um, the requirements of PennDOT. We own it, we operate it, we will pay for it, and we will maintain it according to their requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment? Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed nay. Motion passes seven to zero. O. Resolution number twenty twenty dash thirteen adopting an extension to the consolidated collective bargaining agreement, CBA, with the Fraternal Order of Police, FOP, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. I will so move. Is there a second? Rich, this is again you.
For this contract, this is an extension of the FOP contract through twenty twenty-four. And would anyone like to, Joe, would you like to review the highlights of this, the changes from the prior, and why you're recommending it?
I'm going to pause just to ask Joe that you not tell us why you're recommending it, since I would view that as attorney-client privilege, but if you want to give us the highlights.
I don't think it's attorney-client privilege, he's allowed to make a recommendation for a public vote.
I'm happy to answer any questions you have after I review the, the highlights. The current collective bargaining agreement expires at the end of twenty twenty-one for a variety of reasons in light of the tiers that exist in the current collective bargaining agreement. The FOP and the township negotiated an extension which has three primary components. One is extension on the wages. It adds three years, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, each at two-point-seven-five percent, which I believe are significantly below what other departments in this area and similar, similarly situated police departments and townships are providing as wage increases. The other is to extend the, the healthcare plan that was negotiated in place for the non-union employees and the non-uniformed employees in Public Works and throughout the township, which involved a high deductible plan. That plan was extended with, with economic incentives for the officers to change from their current coverage to the high deductible coverage. The projection from the Director of Finance on savings is, on the life of this contract, approximately eighty-two thousand dollars, a significant positive for the township. The other significant change was the creation of a drop to find retirement option plan for senior officers in the department that they can exercise when they reach normal retirement age.
I note in the memo from Bill White dated December ninth, or to Will White from the Mockenhout, that participants in the drop are not eligible to be certified for state aid purposes, therefore, net obligation to the township could be higher during years when participants in, with participants are in the drop. Based on twenty nineteen state aid, a unit value of five thousand one hundred and twenty, the plan could lose ten thousand two hundred and forty-one per year in state aid for each participant in the drop. Can you explain the significance of that provision, and how that'll affect the, the contract?
In, in theory, it, to me, it's, it's a neutral impact on the plan, and I am not an actuary, I would not draft it that way. The way the drop works is it treats the employee in a schizophrenic fashion. The employee continues to come to work, perform their duties, get paid, whatever the contract provides, continue to receive benefits. For pension purposes, the employee is treated as retired. So for pension purposes, if you have forty-five officers in the police department, sworn active officers, if three of those officers enter drop, for pension funding purposes, you have forty-two officers that, for whom you receive state aid, and you continue to fund ongoing pension obligations. For the three officers who are in drop, the plan treats them as retirees. However, they continue to come to work and get paid. It's double-dipping without finding that new post-retirement job yet.
But again, the state aid is not provided for those three?
Because they're not employed, as far as the pension plan is concerned. Their pension benefit is calculated, and no longer changes or increases.
So that'll be a reduction in the state aid to the township for the pension for those, those folks, so that's my concern.
But they're no longer actively employed. You have, for pension purposes, you have forty-three officers working, still accruing and increasing their pension benefit, and for those three, you receive state aid, or I'm sorry, for the forty-two, you receive state aid. For the three hypothetical officers who've gone into drop, it's as though they left and moved to Montana or Florida, as the case may be. Their pension benefit is calculated, and it accrues every month.
Understood. Again, I, that's my, that's one of the issues I have with this. Also, I note that participants in the, in the drop will not be required to make their employer contributions, employee contributions. It's the same theory, right? Currently, three percent for those hired before twenty thirteen, and five percent for those thereafter is what their state, their, their contributions are. Though, they won't be required to make the contributions to the, to the pension during those drop period as well.
Because their pension is calculated, and they are considered to be retired as far as the plan's concerned. Officer John Doe, who retires, has his pension calculated, separates from employment. He no longer makes pension contributions, and the plan no longer receives state aid for him either.
But the difference is, he is not working, and he's not getting paid by the township anymore, he's getting paid out of the pension. In this case, there's three or four years, whether that, that occurs, and he's still getting paid and working for the township.
But he is not accruing any greater pension benefit.
Again, I understood, understood. Again, I, I disagree with the drop. I, I would not have approved this, and this is not what I think is a good plan for, for Radnor Township.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Gentlemen, I'm going to remind you all that we get the packets a few days in advance. If we have questions for staff, we can certainly ask them before we get here today. There are certain issues which are not terribly appropriate to share with respect to personnel.
Well, I think it's good to have, because the public can hear the discussion, so I think it's beneficial.
That said, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Vote passes six to one. I move for items A, B, D, E, F, G, H, and K of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, oh, sorry, any commissioner comment? I know we have, nobody pulled anything, but. Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed nay. Consent items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and K all pass. Commissioner comment? Since this is new, I will go first. With respect to the trees, the majority of the business conducted by the township is carried out by staff without the prior knowledge or input of the Board of Commissioners. This is indisputably a good thing, since the residents of the township cannot wait for the board to provide feedback on every fence permit and landscaping decision. The unfortunate corollary, however, is that staff will, from time to time, take unilateral action that exceeds their mandate. That happened in this case. By way of answer to some of the specific questions that have raised, my understanding is the following. The funding for the project came from the Radnor Enhancement Community Trust and not taxpayer dollars. The site was evaluated by the township arborist, but the evaluation was conducted more than a year before the project was undertaken. The people who actually felled the timber have confirmed that many, but not all, of the trees that were taken down were diseased, susceptible to emerald dash-borer or spotted lanternfly. The total amount spent was forty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. The land belongs to PennDOT, but is subject to an agreement for maintenance with the township. At the time the trees were felled, there was no approved plan for remediating the site, although a number of alternatives were considered by staff. The board is ultimately responsible for the actions taken by staff. Whereas here, those actions were made without board input, the board is also responsible for implementing new policies and procedures that ameliorate any harm that has occurred and prevent recurrence in the future. We are working on it. We hear you, and we are taking action. By way of positive news, I would like to call out the township manager, a public information officer, and Chief Flanagan for their exemplary work interfacing with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, and the owner of the property on which their Wayne retail location is cited regarding towing complaints received from the residents. As a result of the collaborative work between staff, the landlord, and the tenant, signage has been erected that more clearly notifies patrons that the liquor store lot is private. A repayment program has been agreed to for victims of errant toes, and the liquor store has confirmed that future toes will be performed at the discretion of the manager of the store, and not the discretion of the tow operator. With that great change in mind, I'd like to remind everyone watching that the lot is, in fact, private, and out of simple fairness, should be used only if you plan on making a liquor store purchase while you are there. Last question. For the residents of Lenore Avenue, a number of you have said that you are opposed to board action. Today, we have on the agenda, the agenda, a proposal that would change what I understand what you guys are talking about. It would remove the incursion into the West Wayne Preserve. It would not have a route at the corner of Lenore, and said people would be diverted into the Friends of the Radnor Trail Park. I just want to clarify with you guys, this is what you would want us to do, correct? I'm seeing head nods. Okay, thank you. That is all from me. Is it, is there anybody else with commissioner comment?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. So I just wanted to thank former Commissioner Marshall for coming out, as well as the many residents that have reached out to me, and I believe my board colleagues, on remediation plans for the, the site at the Blue Root. Commissioner Marshall has shared with me some of the contacts at the schools at the University of Pennsylvania, as, and we will be seeking some contacts at Temple University. I'm glad for the suggestions around Shanticleer, and certainly, the Radnor Conservancy has also reached out. And I do believe that pursuant to some of the, many of the comments from the residents this evening, that we can put together a collaborative working group, and including Shade Tree and Parks and Rec, to put together a plan to figure out what we are going to do in that space now. So I want to thank all, everyone. Anyone else who has any thoughts or ideas, please continue to share them with all of us seated up here, and we will, as well as our staff, and we'll be looking forward to moving the project forward. So thank you.
I, a couple, a couple things that I'd like to say. Just wanted to apologize for, for yawning during the public comment. I didn't, usually I don't do that, but it was, and people know, if there's one thing that's I like best about these meetings, it's hearing from the people. And I appreciate everyone who comes out and speaks, and I know people aren't used to it, and it's difficult for a lot of people, and the time for them to come over and sit and, and to go through our arcane procedural rules, it's, it's difficult, and people don't understand it, but I appreciate everyone who does it, and every time they do it. And it's the best way to hear from the constituents and to get direct input, and I encourage everyone to do it, so thank you for doing that. Along those lines, I would request of my, my friend on the other side of the aisle, President Commissioner Jack Larkin, to also embody that spirit with people at the podium, so that we let them speak in, in a full and frank way. Whether we enjoy it or not, it's, it's better to hear. And again, that encourages good decision-making and good public communication and intercourse. So I think that it's worthy, and that I'd encourage you to keep that up. As far as the folks who, on Lenore Avenue, I, I know the issue, and I agree with what you're saying. And I did go and look at it the week before, on the weekend, and, and looked at the area on the street, and behind the homes, and then on Lancaster as well, and understand the issue and agree with making the changes that you're requesting. These, you know, we don't lay out those, the plans, the engineers lay out the plan, and we, we look for input from you on how best to do it, so thank you for that input. And again, that's valuable, and I'm, I'm happy to adjust it the way the folks would like to see it done, based on their concerns about their street. The, the chief of domestic operations at my house, my wife, asked me to also remind everyone about, about the trees. She wanted me to point out that the, the trees are going to be cut, they're cut down on, on, in our area here by the Blue Root and Lancaster Avenue, but also, there will be a lot of trees that will be taken out for the trail at the high school. So that's a fourteen-foot trail that will be put through the high school area. Lot of trees will come out with that as well. There will be new ones planted, but they're much smaller. So be ready for that as well. So that was my wife's message, that if you're concerned about that, you might also be concerned about this, so a heads up on that. Those are my issues. Thanks, Jack.
My, my wife didn't send any messages with me tonight, but, but, but I do have a question of, of President Larkin, who, who commented that it cost forty-six thousand, I, I think, was the number you threw out. I, I don't have any recollection of the fund. How much was in that fund?
I think that amount closed it out, if I recall correctly.
So just to be clear to the residents who want, who are talking about a replanting plan, there is zero left in that enhancement fund.
Good evening. I just wanted to raise an issue that's not directly in our township, but would affect our township, and our colleagues in Lower Marion are facing the billboard that is, they're attempting to put a billboard right up at the five corners that touches in the fifth ward. I've been in communication with Scott Zeloff of Lower Marion, and I just wanted to encourage folks to take a minute and sign the change.org petition. They're looking for more signatures than that. If you are against billboards in our region, you can go to the change.org, keep big billboards out of however township. And also, the case is still running through the courts, and there have been community members appearing, going to the hearing with some picketing and some protesting and that sort of thing. So I just wanted it on your calendars, that the case has been assigned a date on February twentieth, the twenty-fourth, and the twenty-fifth. So if you have time on those days and can go to the courthouse and media to show your feelings about the billboard, I think it also affects our community, so I just wanted to alert you of that information. Thank you.
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I spoke to a bunch of you in the audience that came here tonight about the trees, and I do want to thank you for reaching out to me, and I hear you loud and clear. When it comes to the issue with the Lenore Avenue, I think residents, it's, it's our township, and we need to treat it as such. So if the residents of the street don't want something, all things being equal, I don't want it either. So those are the, the two things on a town, on a township-wide issue. Two things that I have, which is going to be under new business, but we do have safety issues on County Line Road, and I did invite several people, or I believe from the Montrose condominium, so I don't know if they're here tonight. If not, that's a meeting that I want to have, maybe with Maura and Scott Zeloff of Lower Marion, as well as our engineer and traffic people and township manager in regards to, basically, what, to make that area safer. And I say safer, because Maura, we had a conversation, we can make it safer, but it is a tough stretch of road, as many of you that travel know that. So that's number one. Number two, this is a strictly Ward Seven, Garrett Hill issue, is that the former, or the vacancy left by Garrett Hill Pizza, looks like a medical marijuana dispensary has chosen to possibly move in. I did meet with them, I met with them with the manager, our solicitor, Mr. Nercini, our engineer, and it looked, you know, I don't know if, I know on the last one, the residents didn't want that when it was up on Garrett Avenue, but that was an issue of rezoning. It looks like by right, they have the right to do, to move in there, so, so be it. But they have asked me if the neighbors, you know, they have a, if the neighbors want to hear what they have to say, so I would like to have a meeting possibly at the church down the road. So this would be a meeting strictly for the residents, and then I would like them to come here, and they can present for a couple minutes to the board as well. So that's what's going on in the ward. Thank you. Thank you.
Just quickly, thank you, President Larkin. I, I just wanted to comment quickly on the tree issue because it falls in the third ward and my ward, in your ward. I too was blindsided by this project and this action, but I do want to apologize because at the same time that I was finding out about it, I was putting out my first newsletter. I chose to take the communication from our public information officer and communicate that in my newsletter and clearly I did not have all of the facts and all of the background on this project, but was trying to respond to it as quickly as possible. So for that, I apologize. That's in the past. I am much more concerned with what we do going forward, what we do in terms of communication first among the Board of Commissioners with the township employees making these decisions and make sure that this doesn't happen again, but also more importantly, what we do going forward in terms of the replanting and the stormwater control in terms of that. And I look forward to your continued comments on it and suggestions and want to thank Matt Marshall for looking forward and, and taking steps and suggestions as we move forward with this. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item five, committee reports. A ordinance number 2020-02 introduction authorizing the current refunding of the voted open space bond series 2014 in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $11,855,000. I will so move. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any Commissioner comment?
We going to have any discussion of the benefits or the, the scope of the?
We can, we don't have to, but we-
Well, I think that we should, again.
Is that my turn?
I think that's your turn.
Yeah, please, please discuss, please discuss the refinancing and the, and the benefit.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
And the terms, the terms of the new, the new issue.
What I'll do, if you'll permit me, is I'll, I'll combine the explanation of ordinance 2002, or 202002 along with items B and C that immediately follow this because they're all related to the same transaction. What we're proposing is an ordinance that would allow us to refund the series 2014 bonds. Those were passed as, with the approval of the voters. It's voted bond issue, albeit we've never enacted the millage to pay because what the township relies on to pay for these bonds is the realty transfer tax. And in the last couple of years, we've needed some general fund transfers to supplement the cash needed to pay the debt service. So this is an opportunity to reduce our reliance on the realty transfer tax in that fund and hopefully save at the end, the general fund some money. By practice, our net present value savings cutoff for these decisions for refundings is 4% and that's to ensure that there's enough savings after the costs of issuance are paid, that it still makes sense. Where we stand today is net present value savings of roughly 13.2%. That equates to just a shade under 1.2 million over the life of, the remaining life of the bonds and that's about $64,000 per year that the Park and Open Space Fund would save, again, if we priced it today. To the Commissioner, Commissioner Booker's question about the term, this would not extend the term. These were 30-year bonds issued back in 2014, so the maturity will still be 2043. The final pricing isn't scheduled until February 18th, so, you know, we're given market numbers as they exist today. Obviously by February 18th, they could be a little bit different. And then specific to the next two resolutions, we, we have the same team that we've used for the past couple of refundings and new issues. We have Cozen O'Connor, Suzanne Mays representing the township from the bond council side and then PFM and Dan Cosloff representing the township from the pricing agent side. And then we would negotiate the bond sale with Benning and Scattergood and Michael Wolf represents Benning at, in that transaction. All three of them are here tonight to answer any very specific questions, but as, as these deals go, this one's pretty straightforward. It's the refunding by itself and an opportunity to save some money.
What is the, for the 2014 bonds, what is the blended interest rate that we're working from and what's anticipated for the new interest rate? Equating to 64,000 a year is what you're saying?
Yeah. You'll have to bear with me on that question. The net present value savings from the existing rate to what the market would give us today-
Is a millions, million sum.
Provides us with a, yeah, a pretty significant savings.
All right. Well, somebody probably knows that the-
I mean, these are zero bonds that have interest rates for the next 20 years.
Are, are the current, are the current bonds, are they callable right now or is that we, is there a deficiency escrow that we're setting up?
No, we're, federal government eliminated advanced refunding, so this is a current-
This is current refunding, okay. So these are-
It had a five-year call and-
So we're out, we're past the five years right now?
We're within nine, well, by the time we price, we're within the 90-day window.
Okay. So we're right at, we're right at the five years.
Yep.
What's the blended rate, Mike?
New bonds.
Yeah, don't be shy, Mike. Come on, people like to see you.
I'll, I'll save Mike a little bit here. Just understand that whatever these rates are, they're as they exist today.
Right. The interest rates were way down today, so it was a good day to be, to, to talk about the bond pricing.
I think Michael guaranteed them unless they go lower and then we'll take advantage of this.
Good evening. Michael Wolf from the firm of Benning and Scattergood. I was sure I wouldn't be called to the microphone. I was positive. But thank you for calling me. I don't have all the answers, but the interest rates last week were the lowest since Dwight Eisenhower was president. 64 years we haven't had lower interest rates and that's driving the more than $1 million savings. These were the 2014 bonds, these were the bonds for our Drossen. And so as Bill said, it's nice to be able to lower the annual cost of that and make it more within the range of affordability by the transfer tax. The rate on the bonds, if we were selling today, all in, including all costs, 2.4%. Getting rid of bonds that are at a higher interest rate, we thought they were great back in 2014, but we weren't prepared for what's happened since. I don't have, I may have, I'll look it up, if I have the prevailing remaining weighted interest rate, but it's certainly at least 1.1% higher than the ones we're getting rid of.
Okay, so some 3.5% or something?
Or 3.66.
3.66, according to PFM. There you go. All right, so here, here's my question. So those bonds were non-electoral, those, those bonds were actually issued under the referendum, so they didn't count towards our debt, debt, debt capacity. Somebody's watching and wants to talk to me. So now we're going to refund these bonds with, these are going to be, are they the same bonds, are these GOs? And what's the difference as far as the, the cash flows that are pledged to pay these bonds? Are they exactly the same provisions or is that changed based on this new refunding and approval by the Board of Commissioners?
I think the easiest way to think about it is these are replacement bonds. As Bill said, they do not extend the term. They're structured as level repayment and the annual savings is on the order of 50 to 60,000 dollars.
So this is, continues to be electoral debt or does that change at all?
No, no, it was electoral before and we've gone to some lengths to maintain that and these will be replacement and electoral and not count against the borrowing capacity.
Okay. And we said that they were 30-year bonds in 2014, so they, we're going to, five years, so it'll be 25-year for the long bond on this issue. Any other significant changes with refunding these bonds? And what, what's the new call? Is it another five-year call?
But because we're going to stay underneath $10 million in the calendar year, we will be able to maintain another five-year call. And that's been extremely helpful to the township over the years.
So I thought we had like, it was 11 or 12 million that we issued in 2014. What's the size of this issue?
The, this issue will be on the order of 9 million.
Is this going to be a bank?
It's going to be-
Bank qualified?
Yes.
Okay. And where's the, is the official, I don't see, is there official statement in the packet? I didn't see it.
No, you won't see that until the, this is just the first reading of the ordinance.
Okay.
And your next meeting is when you see such exhibits as that.
Okay. So, sounds good. And as far as what the township pledges, maybe Suzanne wants to talk about this. I, I want to understand exactly how we were paying for this before because I thought based on what Bill's saying, we, we talk about paying for this out of real estate transfer tax.
Yes.
Right? And, and now you're saying we're not, we're still going to pay for it out of real estate transfer tax?
Yes.
Not out of the general, general fund, general obligation funds?
That's right. They're technically general obligation bonds.
Is, as long as there's enough realty transfer tax in the fund to pay the debt service, that will be the sole source of funds to pay for this, which was the case for a number of years. However, if you recall during our budget discussions over the last two, three years, we've required small amounts of general fund transfers to supplement the, the fund so they can make the debt expenses. And the board elected to do that versus enacting the millage as part of the voted, the voter And one more nugget there is that the, there's two bond issues that are currently being paid out of the, paid out of the Park and Open Space Fund. The older bonds, which I believe began in 20, 2000, no, a decade before that, those are set to mature in 2026. So after 2026, the only debt service that'll be paid for out of the Park and Open Space Fund with the realty transfer tax revenue will be these bonds. So to the extent we can lower the expense in that fund through a refunding, will give that fund more flexibility, especially in those future years when it, this is the only issue that it's having to pay.
Okay. And just as far as marketing the bonds, we're not planning on, we're going to have a, a underwritten issue is what you're planning as for, from Benning and Scattergood?
Same as all the others.
And do you anticipate premium bonds or discount, how, what's the, for anybody who might be interested in, what's the denominations?
Interestingly, there are a mixture of bonds selling at a premium and bonds selling at a discount to meet the expectations and needs of all different kinds of buyers and the net original issue discount premium is almost nothing. So the one offsets the other and it's just a small amount, less than 50,000 at the moment of premium.
And the, and the bank will take the, all the, the entire issue so there won't be anybody, any, to the public?
No, it's not, no, no, no. It's not that the bank takes all or any banks take all, it's that the fact that it's eligible to be bought by banks increases the number of buyers.
Right.
But they won't-
But there'll be some for people who want some.
That's right.
And that'll be federally and exempt from federal and state tax.
As always, yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Great job, Suzanne. Excellent.
Can I ask a quick question? It's my, my question that I always ask. So what, what would this do to, I guess this would be beneficial to our bond rating? Would it be able to move it up a notch or, or not?
Yeah, I'm not, it won't hurt. I, I don't know if Moody's is going to be in a position, we have a call set up actually to do a, a rating review on Thursday morning. I, I don't think a transaction like this is, is large enough to move the needle much. The same concerns or issues that we discussed with Moody's last year when we did the new money issue will come up again and the answers will be the same. We have, you know, strong economic base, strong cash reserves, but we've, we've got issues on the capital funding side that are unresolved and they like to see those things resolved and buttoned up. So, you know, we'll have the discussion, but I don't think, I don't, I wouldn't anticipate seeing that move much from this kind of transaction.
But this, this would help our rates, keeping them low or lower relative going forward, correct?
What do you mean by rates?
Well, it gives us 64,000 a year to work with.
It does, but a lot of times, you know, and I actually was on the retail side of selling these type of bonds, sometimes people don't want, you know, they want a little bit of, I don't want to say risk, but they get a little bit more premium and when their bonds are getting refunded or called in, whatever the term is, it actually is not beneficial. If they know, hey, they're, they're so creditworthy that they're going to, they're going to re-up in five years or whenever that period is over. I'm just curious if you have, what your take is on that.
Well, these transa, we're somewhat insulated from the end users' risk-reward decision-making. That's where we have Benning coming in and underwriting it. They're, they'll be the ones that'll go into the market and they'll find the buyers and then Dan will make sure that whatever prices we ultimately end up at are the best that the market's providing on that day to Radnor Township. I, I can't speak to what the, the end investor's going to have to worry about with this.
Well, not the end investor, but it doesn't hurt, it won't hurt going forward. That's my, that's my major-
It'll be whatever the market says. I mean, if, if mark, if the market's saying it's selling bonds at a certain rate and that's, that's when investors are willing to buy, then that's what we're going to sell at.
So we went a little bit out of order and we took Commissioner comment first. We have switched that up, so we'll go now back to public comment. Is there any public comment on this? Is there any staff comment beyond what we've already heard? Hearing none, I will call the vote on 5A, ordinance number 2020-02. John, is this a roll call vote or is this just majority? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to resolution number 2020-04, engagement, PFM to provide financial consulting services for the current refunding of the voted open space bond series 2014. Bill, I understand you already walked us through that with the prior comment. Is there anything you'd like to add? Is there any public comment? Is there any additional staff comment? Is there any Commissioner comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Resolution number 2020-05, engaging Cozen O'Connor's bond counsel for the current refunding of the voted open space bond series 2014. Again, Bill, covered previously?
I, I would be remiss, but I didn't, didn't say that Radnor does have the very best working for us in this regard. Our, our folks do a fantastic job and we should all feel very confident at the end of the day that what, what's transacting is that, is the very best for Radnor Township. So Cozen, PFM, Michael, all do a great job, so.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote.
Understood. Okay. Is there any public comment? Okay. Is there any staff comment beyond what we've just heard? In that case, I will call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All abstaining? I understand there's one, so it is six to zero with one abstention. Commissioner Abel abstaining. Motion passes. Resolution number 2020-06, amending resolution number 2018-21, a resolution of Radnor Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania. Amending resolution number 2017-65, which established a policy for televising or taping public meetings within the Radnor Township Municipal Building as requested by Commissioner Borowski. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any public comment?
Dan Sherry, first and foremost, could you be consistent in terms of this? Is it staff comment, Commissioner comment, public comments? Public comment first? The tradition in Radnor meetings is public comment follows Commissioner and staff comments. We seem to be sort of being arbitrary about how we're running these meetings, just like we were kind of ridiculous when we said the Sunshine Act provides you with some power to limit public comment at the start of the meeting. Anyhow, Dan Sherry, Wayne. Apparently, for some reason, it is being requested in a very awkwardly written proposed resolution that what this township needs now is to not have televised or videotaped meetings for certain advisory boards. Importantly, these meetings are public meetings. Nobody has been lured onto any of these advisory boards under the auspices of this is a private, confidential meeting, as a result, please volunteer. What you're saying is confidential. They're public meetings. And to bring up the Sunshine Act that Mr. Larkin erroneously- And to bring up the Sunshine Act that Mr. Larkin erroneously referred to earlier tonight, anybody can come in, should they choose, and record the meeting. Know one of the reasons why I know that? Because when the ethics board tried to have the John Nagel Ethics Hearing conducted in the basement of this building, I had to bring in my own videographer. Nobody could do anything to oppose that, because that's the law. So what is the evidence? And given that Mr. Larkin has appeared to sort of co-mingle and switch back and forth when public comment occurs, and staff comment occurs, and Commissioner comment occurs, what's the evidence in terms of individuals who apparently are so worried about the following scenario? I'm Joe Blotts, and I want to volunteer for an advisory board like Carfac. And I understand that these meetings are public. And I understand that anybody can come in and videotape me for any reason, just videotape me. Nevertheless, if you put on the township cameras, I refuse. Why would we want to encourage that type of behavior? Anybody who does that, I would recommend not knowing them any longer. But again, I have no rationale before me because public comment, according to Mr. Larkin, tonight is first before Commissioner comment as to what the evidentiary basis is for Ms. Borowski proposing this thing that apparently Mr. Larkin supports. It is anti-transparency. It is anti-accountability. Where have I heard those words before? Accountability and openness. Oh, that's right. That's on the Radnor Democrats masthead. Accountability, openness, fiscal discipline. And yet, you have a resolution tonight, which the public has to comment on first without hearing any of the apparent underlying evidence supporting it, that is antithesis to those principles. Where is the accountability if we don't have meetings filmed? Where is the openness? Where is the fiscal discipline to that? Again, public meetings, not people on the board who think, oh geez, I only can give this if it's confidential. I want to hear the evidence. I would like the opportunity to comment on the purported evidence. For example, if Ms. Borowski said, well, I've gotten a lot of emails regarding it. Ooh, first and foremost, that sounds like a fun Pennsylvania right-to-no request. Maybe I'll consider that. But regardless, that should be explored before the public comments. All we now have is a resolution, a resolution interestingly that amends it that doesn't really make clear whether or not Ms. Borowski is only in disfavor of the meetings being televised or video recorded. That's something that's a little inconsistent in the resolution itself. I'm actually not all that upset as long as the meetings are videotaped and put up on Radnor's YouTube channel.
Could I have one minute?
That's the, oh, stop it, Mr. Larkin. I can keep track of time. You should keep track on your own agenda. You had Mr. Farley talking about pot and pizzerias. What's that got to do with anything that is contained in four? Or somebody else commenting about billboards in Haverford? Stop. Please, let's have some consistency in these meetings, and let's stress the virtues of accountability, openness, and fiscal discipline, because the people supporting this tonight are from the party that actually campaigns on those values. You couldn't have possibly, madam now from the fifth ward and sir from the third ward, you couldn't have possibly campaigned just on, I don't like Donald Trump. It had to be actually correlated to those values. Anti-transparency resolutions are antithesis to that. Thanks.
Is there any additional public comment? Hearing none, is there any staff comment? Is there any Commissioner comment?
So I will comment since I am the one who put this on the.
We have some public, more public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I used to work for the cable company in Radnor, and we did a, we always filmed all these, these things. And this was before it was Comcast, it was a long time ago. And he, I feel that, that the filming, the filming, videotaping, whatever, of the township meetings is very important because the people who, like, tonight is a very rare time that I have, I have off. I usually work in the evenings, and I'm not able to attend these meetings. To be able to view them on the television, you know, it's, it's a very important thing to be able to get that out to what's going on here. And I think if we're going to, and I'm not really familiar with the policy that is being, being discussed tonight, and I would like, you know, if it is indeed has something to do with getting rid of filming these things or videotaping these things, I'm totally against that because I think it does a terrible disservice to the residents because there are people that just can't be here. They are not here, and although it's public access, and we all know public access isn't the big wazoo of the video world, it is very important that we are here, and you, people can view us and view you guys doing your thing. And so if indeed this is some kind of restrictive policy on videotaping this, I'm totally against it, and I think it's really a bad idea, and it's going to do a disservice to the township and all of the residents. Thank you.
Try again. Is there any other public comment? Going, going, gone. Okay, Commissioner Borowski.
Okay, so I am going to put some clarity around this. First of all, the only change to the existing policy that I am proposing to amend the resolution 2018-21, which we passed back in February of 2018, is to add Carfac work meetings. And I do need to ask to amend this because it does not specifically specify that, but is to amend the list of boards and commissions for which mandatory televising is not necessary or well-suited. So already included on that list, and have been included on that list, were civil service, building code appeals, educational services agency, rental housing appeals. And a lot of those are not televised because they deal with human resources issues, they deal with code appeals, they deal with things that are a personal nature to individuals who are, who are in front of these committees. So Carfac, the Citizens Audit Review and Financial Advisory Committee, was formed in order to enhance transparency. In fact, in the specific, I guess, amendment, resolution that formed Carfac, it was called, "The Citizens Audit Review and Financial Advisory Committee is an additional layer to enhance the township's effort to promote transparency and financial accountability, and to ensure the appropriate and proper expenditure of taxpayer dollars." For two years, since we added Carfac work sessions, and again, I will ask to amend this, to include that, we have not had a functioning Carfac. They have not been meeting. We have taken almost two years to get, how many members do we have now? I think five of the nine that we're supposed to have. We do not have a fully constituted Carfac. I do not have any emails that have said this to me, but I have spoken to residents who are interested in serving and would do so if it was not televised. The work sessions were not televised. I am not asking, they will still be required to have, I believe it's quarterly meetings, which will happen here, which are televised. But as their work sessions, they are a financial think tank. They are here to collaborate. We have significant financial challenges facing our township. How are we going to continue to fund our fire department moving forward? How are we going to fund our stormwater? What the heck are we going to do with our sewers? These are things I think we can benefit from, and I can't think of any more transparency than having our residents with their sleeves rolled up, with their elbows up, up to their elbows in our financials, and helping us figure out how we're going to solve these problems moving forward. So I believe this is a good step in trying to fully constitute Carfac again, get them moving, and then I will ask this board that we set for specific projects that we ask Carfac to begin to meet with, and begin to formulate some plans as we move through our sewer issues. We're going to need Carfac. We need our citizens to be involved, and right now, they are not. So, that's my spiel. I am going to first ask that we amend the resolution that is before the board right now to add to number five where it says the Citizens Audit Review and Financial Advisory Committee, Carfac, work sessions. So that is the specific meeting. It is not all the Carfac meetings. It is just their work sessions. They happen upstairs. They are public meetings. They keep minutes to that meeting. So it just would make it so they're not meeting down here in front of the TV cameras where I think collaboration is more difficult. So I will ask for, I will move to amend and add the words "work sessions" to the end of that sentence.
I will second the amendment, and I'm calling the vote on the issue of amendment only. Then we can go back to debating the issue.
Public comment?
There is no public comment, nor is there Commissioner comment on amendments. All in favor say aye.
On substantive amendments, you can make the claim that there's no public comment on a move the table, but not on a substantive amendment.
There's no comment on amendments. All in favor say aye.
Wait, point of order, this vote is out of order. You need to have public comment.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Was that two or three? Amendment passes five to two. Now, speaking on the issue of the amended motion, is there anyone, is there any other Commissioner who has a comment?
Wait, speaking on the issue of the amendment, you didn't even have, you didn't have a chance for pub, you didn't have a chance for Commissioner comment on the amendment. You just called the vote. It's just out of order. It's improper.
Correct. That's how it works.
It's not how it works.
Yes, it is.
We have a chance for Commissioner comment on the amendment, public, and so.
You don't discuss, no.
Yes, yes you do.
Do you want to discuss the now amended motion, yes or no?
Yes, I do.
Then go.
Okay. After the vote, I would offer, I offer a sec, another amendment. And my amendment is as follows. Delete the word, delete the portion of the paragraph five, delete from "and" the last sentence, "and the Citizens Audit Review Financial Advisory Committee, Carfac, work meetings", and insert the word "and" after the comma of agency and before the word Rental Housing Appeals Board. So that it would read, "Recognizing that there are certain boards and commissions for which mandatory televising is not necessary, the following board committee meeting shall not be required to be televised, Civil Service Commission, Building Code Appeals Board, Educational Services Agency, and Rental Housing Appeals Board," period.
Okay. Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails for lack of majority. Is there anyone else?
What was the vote? What was the vote?
Vote was two to five.
Okay. Commissioner Abel and Booker voting for, for that. And now to the, since my amendment failed, now we're back to the original amended resolution, which, which we will hopefully have public comment before we vote on the now amended resolution. Here's what I'd like to say about this amendment in general. I think that this, the entire amendment is bad, but it's especially bad with respect to the Citizens Audit Review and Financial Advisory Committee. This Democrat-controlled Board of Commissioners, as was pointed out, I didn't even know this. I learned this tonight, is supposedly ran on accountability, openness, and fiscal discipline. Yet we are voting for the Citizens Audit Review Committee, which was stated will have its, people having their elbows up to their, be up to their elbows in taxpayer money determining issues of how we're going to pay for a fire department, stormwater, and sale of our sewer system, and you want to do that in private upstairs and not let the public ever see the meeting, and you just rely on meeting minutes. Just trust us. This is a disaster. This is exactly the type of closed-door, backroom dealing that leads people to distrust government. If we have the Board of Health, if we have the Shade Tree Commission talking about every tree that's going to be cut down, but we don't have people dealing with $42 million in taxpayer money a year, and tens of millions of dollars in borrowing and expenditures, and you want to have them do that in private, it's ridiculous on its face. It's bad government. It's bad for the people to understand how these things are working. And if any of our advisory boards and commissions, which all of them are televised, if any are going to be televised, the most important ones to televise are the ones dealing with all the taxpayer dollars. $42 million in taxpayer money a year, both from real estate transfer tax, from business privilege and mercantile tax, and other local taxes that we levy and fees that we levy upon the people. Let the people see what they are doing as they do analysis and advice that they provide to this Board of Commissioners. And also, this resolution just two years ago passed to make all these meetings televised, and you voted for it, Ms. Borowski. You voted for it two years ago, and you joined with us in a bipartisan measure to make government more accountable, more open, more transparent by having televised meetings for Carfac. And now, just two years later, you are now taking it back and making it a private, private affair of what advice is provided and analysis provided on the finances of our taxpayers. It's outrageous. It goes against what you supposedly stand for by your own measures, but it's bad government altogether. I would, I would urge this board not to approve this.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment?
Well, I appreciate Commissioner Booker's comments. The one thing I would, would ask the President is just to make sure, just so we can hold decorum, that all comments should be directed at the chair, not at individual colleagues or, or the residents. But like Commissioner Booker, I too am opposing this issue. As he said in 2017, I brought this proposal forward and had a six-one vote bipartisan with Commissioner Borowski voting in favor of it. Subsequently, just so if the residents aren't aware, members of Carfac resigned. And that's, that's their right. They're volunteers, and they chose to resign in a statement of protest. Since that time period, we've reconstituted Carfac. And every time somebody comes before the board, or before the board for an interview, the question's asked, "Are you okay with being on television?" Everyone who's on Carfac now has said yes. They held their first meeting in December. I didn't hear any comments from the members on Carfac that said, you know, I don't want to do this anymore. No one resigned after being on television or being televised and put up on YouTube.
Would you hear back?
It's been two years and this board is only half-filled for that very reason, correct?
Well, let me finish my comments, and I mean, then you can ask questions. So we have a quorum to Commissioner Enderly's question. If there's five of nine positions filled, no one's saying to me that it's because they're being televised. I actually have two residents in my ward who have reached out to me and asked if there's openings and if they'd be a good candidate for Carfac. And I said, yeah, they just haven't put in their application yet. So being televised isn't the issue here. And again, they were televised in December, and has anyone in this township heard a peep from our volunteers that said, "That was horrible. I can't do it anymore. I resign"? We've heard nothing. My second point on this is, I mean, it's almost as if we're tone deaf. I mean, these residents tonight are coming out here saying, what happened? There was no transparency, and we just lost four acres of land. What do you think's going to happen when a committee who, you know, we're going to give major issues to, like, the potential to sell our sewer system, which is tens of millions of dollars that's going to be given to the township? What do you think's going to happen when those discussions happen? And residents, as the resident pointed out, you know, you may work. You may have kids who have sporting events, and you cannot come out to the meetings. Do you trust this board to give you, to tell you what you think you need to be hearing? Or do you trust yourself and your own ears, your own eyes, and you would rather go on YouTube and see what that discussion was? So we. So we prevent something like what happened at the Blue Root clear cutting, you know? I always say, and I've said it since day one, our township works best when residents are engaged and informed. This is a bad resolution. This is to make sure residents can't get the information they need, and it makes it harder. And it makes it harder on this board, and it makes it harder on the residents, and, you know, that's where, you know, we're going to have trust issues, and I want to prevent that. I want to make sure you guys have all the information you need. I'm going to oppose this resolution, and hopefully my colleagues will join me.
You'll yield back the rest of your time?
We don't have time limits to yield.
Just, just two quick points.
Is there any additional public comment? Oh, sorry, commissioner comment?
We, we have, many people do not have cable. Many people stream, and they get their information off of YouTube and off of the internet, and they look at these meetings without ever having the cable. When we don't televise them, you take that ability away from them. Also, we have asked, this is not a matter of us not having meetings, this board has asked for Carfac to be engaged on certain items over the last two years, and they haven't been asked to do it. I have, one of my, my neighbors has come here several times waiting to participate. He was here at budget, last, at the budget meeting and other times, and saying, "When are we going to be involved?" And I, and I say, "Don't worry about it, we're going to get some assignments to you." So they're waiting to work. We, all we need to do is give them work today. There's no need to change this. There's a quorum, and we, they're waiting to work, and, and we, I've, I've asked the administration to give them items to look at, and they, nothing is, we haven't had any results of it yet, but it's, let's do it, let's have them work, we don't need to change the televising issue.
All right. So I hear what you had to say, Rich, and Jake, and I initially did vote for having it televised. That was two years ago. In that two years, we've been able to get only five. So we may have a quorum, but it is a bare minimum of a quorum. So if someone decides not to show up that day, two people, then we have three people there. And that's not going to get that done. So I think that it sounds good, it's a great soundbite, I get it, it is where we are looking for transparency. You're going to have four of those meetings televised. The meetings upstairs are more breakout sessions, and that's going to, I believe, allow a freer process of thinking. But nothing stops these members from jumping into an executive session where they would essentially turn the cameras off. So I understand it, I get that it's a great soundbite, these meetings are not private, Commissioner Booker, these are, now you said they were private, they are open to the public, you can go there if you want, they are not private meetings, they're just not going to be taped. And there are a lot of other meetings in other townships and other forms of government that are not taped or recorded. But looking at, at what we're, we're talking about, we're going to have four of those meetings up here on the dais taped, to have the meetings upstairs in a breakout room where, I mean, I gotta, I gotta be honest.
Open to the public.
Yeah, it's open to the public, but I gotta be honest, the acoustics aren't even that good in there anyway. And I believe initially Commissioner Barowski and I went to one of those meetings, and we were the only two people there. Now, that's not to say that people won't, don't want to know what's going on, but again, I don't think that appetite, using that buzzword, is really, really there. So I get how it looks and how it sounds, it sounds terrible that we're hiding something, but we're not. We need Carfac, we need to know what we should do with the sewer, what we should do with stormwater, or any one of these hundreds, and I mean hundreds of projects that we have questions with. And we have, after two years, when these people left, we have not been able to get nine people. We have struggled to get five people in two years. So that should say, you know, that should speak volumes of, no, these people do not want to do it. And I want to get the best and brightest people, and almost on, almost any board, zoning, planning, parks, I mean, we, we put that out there and we'll have six or seven people that are interested in it. We do not have that appetite for the residents, for the 30,000 residents here in Radnor, they don't want to do it, and we need that information. So I will be voting in support of this resolution.
Is there any additional commissioner comment?
The only thing I'd just like to clarify is that Carfac only opines on financial impact. They don't set policy, they don't make decisions. Anything that they would do, they would come or recommend, they'd come before this board, and we would have to approve it, adopt it, amend it, consider it, and it would then that, you know, it would all be out there for anyone to see and to review. We have Carfac to thank for some terrific initiatives, like our OPEB spending plan, which they brought forward to us. So we have Carfac, we've had, that is something that I think that the group helped put together, and that is something that is beneficial to the township. So I'll be supporting this. I think we need Carfac.
Any additional commissioner comment?
I just want to be clear, and I know that I'm new to this game, but in terms of going back how many years, and I just asked Rich and we went back and forth, but how many years have we been taping these? Two years, three years?
About two.
The Carfac meeting?
It's been two years.
Two years?
They haven't had a meeting, though, so none of them has been taped.
They haven't had a meeting yet, because they, we didn't have anyone on it.
Okay.
It's taken two years to get five people.
But in 2012, didn't we start this, or 2010, Carfac came into being, something like that? And they had, they've had meetings, and they've not, not been televised, that's why we made...
They haven't been.
They weren't, but they had meetings for several years, and I attended several of them, and this board collectively reviewed the policy and decided that their work was important enough, and we voted to have it televised.
They were originally formed, the resolution is January of 2011.
Hearing no additional.
Just a couple more comments. So just in response to some of the comments I've heard, Commissioner Barowski says, "We need Carfac." We have Carfac, we have a quorum, they met. Again, nothing is saying that four members aren't sitting out there waiting for us to say it's not being televised to come, turn in applications. We have five members, they've met in December, they're willing to do work for the township. So this idea that we need them, we already have them, they're there, they're working for us, give them issues to work on. Commissioner Farre says, compares us to other townships. I didn't run to compare myself to Lower Marion or to TE. I ran to set an example for Radnor Township, so you know what? So other townships can look at Radnor and say, "Those guys televise 100% of their meetings, maybe we should do that." He also, Commissioner Farre also made the comment that it's open to the public and that only two members showed up. Well, that's kind of the point, not everyone can get out on a weeknight, so they're watching it on YouTube or streaming. That's what we want.
And that was my point.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's take a look at some of the numbers, but let's deal in facts in terms of how many people are actually out there watching anything but the VOC meetings. I'm on YouTube right now and looking at the, the number of hits, and, I mean, you, it's two, three hits, 10 hits?
The other issue, the other issue is if there's something that comes down the road a year from now, and they say, "Oh yeah, we discussed that a year ago," you've got it, it's, it's a, it's a record that you can go back to and see exactly what was said, who said it, and so you know how, you can see how the sausage is made. Again, taking access away from people is never a good idea.
With that, I'm going to call the vote, all in favor say aye. We've already had public comment. All in favor say aye.
Point of order, point of order, we need to have public comment on the amendment. We didn't have point of, we, we did not have public comment on the amended motion, resolution.
Sunshine Act just requires public comment on the agenda item. You don't get to have public comment, Mr. Sherry, on every amendment.
You don't know what you're talking about, Mr. Rice, as usual. Before official action, you're about to do official action.
Before official action, John, we, it's been our tradition and our interpretation of the Sunshine Act to provide public comment.
I'm prepared to call the vote at this point. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes five to two. Moving on to Resolution Number 2020-10, awarding the contract for design permitting and bidding documents for the Fire and Domestic Water Service to Carroll Engineering in the amount of $21,980. Mr. Norsini, and then we will have public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the township agreement with the Willow's Park Reserves requires us to provide the domestic and fire water service to the Willow's Mansion. In order to do so, we have gotten a valid proposal from Carroll Engineering to do the permitting, design, and bidding documents for this project. The cost proposal from Carroll Engineering is $21,980. This project is to be funded by monies in the general fund allocated to the requirements of the lease agreement.
Okay, moving to public comment.
You know what we should do? I think we should amend this so that we increase it from, let's see here, $21,980 to $21,980,000. And let's do that after the public comments, and then per that amendment, preclude the public from commenting on it because it was amended. Do you understand the precedent you just laid down with that last vote? You can put any agenda item in here that you want, allow an amendment without public comment on the amendment, vote on the amendment, allowing the amendment to stand, and then vote on the amended motion without public comment. What type of accountability is this, Mr. Larkin? I've never seen this at a Radnor Board of Commissioners meeting, that you would allow Lisa Barowski to amend her own resolution, no public comment about the amendment, allow commissioner comment to occur, and then take official action without the public getting to weigh in on the amended motion. Let's think about how dangerous that is. It means that the agenda counts for nothing, because any commissioner can propose an amendment and provide that they have the votes, the motion is fundamentally changed. And then John Rice chirping up again, who apparently, like Mr. Farre, has no idea what the Sunshine Act stands for. Mr. Farre said in the last motion, "Oh, you can just go into executive session without limits." Really? I think the Sunshine Act limits it, let me think about that. Yep, it does, it governs, it's been in effect since 2011. You can only go into executive session for very limited reasons, Mr. Farre. You might want to read up for that for yourself, because Mr. Rice apparently doesn't know it, or at least wouldn't correct you on it. But that is the precedent that you now have due to your ridiculous, absolutely incoherent approach to how business comes before this board. So yeah, why don't you offer amendment to change it to $21 million? And then later on tonight, let's change every single agenda item after the public weighs in, so that way the public can't comment at all. That's accountability, that's openness, that's transparency, that's fiscal discipline? That's arbitrary, that's dangerous, that undercuts the purpose of an agenda. The public now has no confidence that they're going to be able to weigh in on anything. Remember they said, "Boy, I'd like to hear what Lisa Barowski's evidence was." Here was her evidence. I don't have any emails. It's just dialogue, apparently, allegedly. No weighing in. Please stop this ridiculous precedent before it really starts gathering steam. It's obscene. Thanks.
Is there any additional public comment?
Point of order. I agree with Mr. Sherry's comments. It, it really doesn't make sense that residents are coming up here and commenting on what may not be the final product, so they don't, so they could be commenting on something that doesn't make sense. We should give them an opportunity to comment on the final version that we're voting on, so either they have two comments, one before and then one after, to make sure it's the final, or I think we just go back to the way it was and we move it to the end.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Hearing none, is there any staff comment? Hearing none, is there any commissioner comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes six to one. Moving on to Item F, Resolution Number 2020-14, West Wayne Avenue Trail Connection, awarding the design and permitting contract for a trail connection to traffic planning and design in the amount of $42,900. I will so move, is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Norsini, could you walk us through this?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this specific item has not been before the commissioners previously, but the TAP Trail has been discussed previously, as well as the crossing at Conestoga and Lenore, and the section of the proposed trail that would run through the West Wayne Preserve. This has been much consternation for the residents on Lenore and the surrounding area regarding that crosswalk. The design proposal submitted by Traffic Planning and Design is to provide the permitting, design, and bidding documents to use West Wayne Avenue as the pedestrian connector, eliminating the need for the Conestoga-Lenore crosswalk and the West Wayne Reserve Trail Connector. So we spoke to our contact at PennDOT and DVRPC, and the way we were told to do this, the township would have to do this outside of the TAP Trail, outside of the TAP Trail project. The funding for the TAP Trail project would not be used for this. If the township so wished to fund this design and subsequent construction, we would do that prior to the bidding for the TAP Trail, and at that point eliminate the section at Lenore and through the West Wayne Preserve. So currently, there is no dedicated funding for this project. This isn't even on our unfunded project list, because this is relatively new. So TAP funds cannot be used for the design or construction of this project, so if it so pleases the board to move forward with this, we will have to determine how this project is funded.
Understood. Is there any public comment?
Hi, Dan Sherry, Wayne. Is anybody planning any amendments to this? Because I know this is my only opportunity, and I apologize if that's a little prophylactic, but apparently that's how we're doing business now. So anybody thinking of changing this at all? I know I'm sort of putting you all on the spot, but I really need to be able to temper my comments to any amendments, and I have to be able to see in the future to do that. So is anybody thinking that? I see that we're holding our head in our hands, Ms. Barowski. You've brought this on yourself in terms of this type of behavior that I've seen so far tonight. That is the silliness in terms of this. You're not going to be speeding up board meetings with this. You're creating distrust, and now you're talking amongst yourselves. It's cool to ignore your microphone even though the light is on. Please retain some level of decorum to these meetings. Commissioner Abel brought it up at the last agenda item that thankfully wasn't too materially changed. I think you need to answer for that, Mr. Larkin. Thanks.
Is there any additional public comment? Hearing none, is there any staff comment? Opening up to commissioner comment, first off, Mr. Norsini, would this resolve the issues that were presented by Lenore residents?
Yes, sir. Lenore, the Lenore-Conestoga crossing, as well as heading down West Wayne and heading west on Conestoga to that, that would be eliminated. So this would really just, in the TAP Trail project, West Wayne to friends of the Radnor Trail Park is already noted as a share row for bikes. So we would just follow that same area with pedestrians. The work would include adjusting the traffic signal, making it the one-corner ADA compliant, we'd have to do some sidewalk widening, crosswalks down at Highland, across West Wayne into the park, and then we were looking at possibly a dedicated sidewalk adjacent to the veterinary hospital to take people back in.
And this would avoid cutting down a whole bunch of trees in the preserve, correct?
It would eliminate all the work in the preserve.
No, well...
For this project.
For this project, and let's just be clear, there's a stormwater project that we discussed at the October Town Hall meeting that will remove most, if not all, those trees in order to do stormwater management there.
And if, if this did not occur, that project would probably expand, as the commissioner is saying, to, to this area to use for more stormwater management. So specifically, the trail would stop the cutting from trees, but not the stormwater project.
Got it. Okay, that's a fair distinction.
Commissioner, if I may, Commissioner Larkin? First, I'd like to make a comment on Mr. Sherry's comments. He's absolutely right, to the extent that an amendment would obviate or significantly change in a motion to not provide an additional period for public comment is in opposite to our practice and to the Sunshine Act. The change, a significant material change in the resolution must always be provided with additional public comment, otherwise, the point is well taken, the agenda has no meaning, because you can simply change the entire resolution and no longer provide an opportunity to the public. I don't know why, as a matter of policy... I don't know why, as a matter of policy, we'd want to do it, and I don't believe that it comports with the provisions of the Sunshine Act. That said, on this particular resolution, and I'm addressing the folks that are here, we're looking at $33,400 or $42,900, and that's just for the design services. So you recognize what Mr. Norsini, as our township engineer, talked about. So we'll be looking at $40,000 to design this change in the trail, and then it still needs to be built. So if the design costs $40,000, you would expect that the trail would cost, you know, 80% more, whatever it is. Usually, the design is a small portion of the... So this is a significant change. And you also understand what he's saying is that this change would not be covered under the grant that was received for the trail, so this would be paid for out of funds of the township and that we therefore, it would be an unbudgeted item. So it's a significant expense. Steve, can you give us some idea? Say $30,000 or $40,000 for design. What's the actual construction going to be that's not going to be part of the TAP trail? Do you have a total number?
We don't, Commissioner, and that's actually part of this proposal to come up with that. One of the things that, about 20% of the cost of this proposal is the required survey we need to do from the intersection of Conestoga and West Wayne, down West Wayne and into the park. So that's, somewhat inflates it. So like the straight design and permitting portion is probably closer to $30,000, $34,000. But I don't have, I mean, we're not anticipating a huge amount of work. We know ADA ramp. We know some signal changes similar to what you signed the TE 164, you know, hand man, perhaps some sidewalk widening going down and then side, you know, crosswalks, and then some sidewalk at the Friends of the Radnor Trail Park. This type of project, I can't, I know where you're going. I can't equate to say that the design is X percent of the total. We really need to go through the design to get a valid probable cost of construction.
Well, I can't, typically, the design is 5% or 10% of the total cost, which would give us somewhere around $400,000. It can't possibly be $400,000 to do this.
No, it's nothing of that magnitude. That I can tell you.
It seems like the design is going to cost as much as the project.
I really can't speak to what that cost is, but this was, we actually used TPD because they have all the data for the TAP trail because they were our traffic engineers for that. So I was hoping to get some economies of scale with them doing it.
So, I mean, this is a big number for us. This will be, this will be at least $80,000, $90,000 by the time we're done. So the design, I, Mr. Norsini, $33,000 or $40,000, I mean, that seems like it's so high for what the people, the people just want a different trail access, not at the end of Lenore. I don't know why it costs this much to design it, let alone build it. However, what they're gonna, they're all gonna attack me and say, "How dare you question the numbers?" Okay, all right. So I'm just, just so you know, this is going to be a big number. It's gonna be 80,000, $100,000 by the time we make this change outside of the TAP trail. I hear the complaints in the community. I'm gonna vote for this now, but I'm going to look to my amigos, my uno, dos, tres, cuatro, cinco, seis. How do you say seven in Spanish? Amigos? Siete amigos, six amigos. So we can try to find the money here. Maybe, maybe we designate it out of the savings from the bond, something like that. There's $64,000 there. So just so you're aware, this is just the design and we still have the construction. So this is actually a big change, so...
No.
Not according to the rules that he's established, which I would implore to the board chair to allow additional public comment on this.
Can I, can I just ask a question? If that's all right. So is there a possibility, so if we, so we approve this, and we go ahead and do it, and we engineer it, and then suppose we can't find the money for it at some point, what will happen then?
The trail is as proposed.
Okay. And is there a possibility that since this is still part of the trail, I realize we can't use the TAP trail grants that have already been designated for the trail, could we get money for, you know, is there a possibility of getting grants for ourselves, for this piece of the trail, for a trail?
I believe so, Commissioner, but we are under a timeline. So based on our conversation with those two representatives from DVRPC and PennDOT, we need to try to get this, if it so pleases the board, to do this work. We need to get this done by the end of summer, installed, so that it's there and then we eliminate the other one. It wouldn't be a concurrent practice. So we, we would really need, based on that conversation, to get this done by August, designed and constructed.
When's Delco gonna offer those Greenways grants again? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is there any additional?
So to the neighbors on Lenore who came out tonight, I applaud your comments. This doesn't happen without you guys being vocal. When I first heard about this proposed TAP trail project close, over a year ago, I opposed it from the beginning. I, I mean, I've got four young boys. We've got friends that live across Conestoga. There's no way in the world I would have them cross, you know, for us it'd be, we'd be taking the trail and then crossing Conestoga to go to Lenore. And, you know, Commissioner Booker's raising numbers. There's threats that the TAP trail is gonna go away if we vote against it. You know, I'm not gonna put a price on our kids' safety, and making kids cross the road at Conestoga and Lenore is unsafe, and we've got a first responder up on the board with us now, and I'm not gonna put him in a position where he's gotta respond to that call. So if, I'm gonna support this because I believe, we already have two access points. We have West Wayne and we have Gallagher. They're both used. They're both heavily trafficked. It makes sense that they continue across Conestoga and West Wayne and just access at the Friends of Radnor Trail. If, you know, and I'm hoping this is unanimous because, you know, the neighborhoods want this, and it's the right thing to do. But if the, if it's, you know, if the options are support this or lose the TAP trail, I'm okay with losing the TAP trail because our kids are gonna be safe still, and we still have West Wayne and Friends of Radnor Trail to use. So I'm gonna support this resolution. Hopefully, this board will support funding for, you know, whatever we need to do at the West Wayne, Friends of Radnor Trail entrance, and this is the right thing to do for the kids, and we'll keep our community safer.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So Commissioner Abel just said twice that we could lose the TAP trail. Is that not the case? I feel like, Mr. Norsini, you just answered me earlier saying, "If we engineer this and if we don't get the money to complete it by this summer, the TAP trail's coming through, and they're gonna go ahead and do what they planned anyway." Am I correct in understanding that?
So the TAP trail was a plan approved six or so years ago. I guess nobody on that board was there. I didn't have much involvement in it. That is how it is laid out. At this stage, our consultant has told us that if we were to make substantive changes, it's too late for that. So conceivably, the TAP trail could stop, and we would have to give back all those grant awards, reject those grant awards. So I mean, it's not, it's not saying it has to go through, but we would have to, you know...
You're not saying that the TAP trail would fail as a result of this amendment. However, as I understand Jake's comment, he was saying that one or more commissioners might move to cancel the TAP project and reject those grants if this resolution did not pass. Am I getting both of you right?
No.
I'm confused, sir. I don't...
Well, then, no, never mind.
Mr. Norsini, is there not an opportunity to go back to, those grants were already issued, I guess? There's no opportunity to go back and show them that this is for the betterment of the community and the public good? This is a better option?
From what our consultant told us, this would be a very substantive change, and at this stage of the game, it would endanger this project going out to bid. So at that point, the grant ages, I believe the deadline from the grant agencies is this has to get bid this late summer. And if we can't do that, and again, this is what our consultant's telling us, if we can't do that, they're not gonna continue with the grants. So they aren't physical cash grants. They're match, you know, so we have to spend the money and get reimbursed. So they wouldn't be taking cash back. The grants would, I guess, be...
And our consultant's telling us there's no opportunity to go back and...
That is correct.
...re-submit, renegotiate, point out to them how this is in better public interest.
You are correct. And this is how, so outside of our consultant, I spoke to DVRPC and PennDOT, our PennDOT rep and our DVRPC rep, and they said, "If the township wants to eliminate that thing, great, but you're gonna have to do some, you know, if you wanna do this other path, if you will, no pun intended, do it outside the grant, get it constructed, and then prior to going to bid, just remove that section." And they saw no harm, no foul with that. I'm only going by what our consultant and our...
I understand. Thank you. Again, new to the process, new to the conversation, but want to ask questions. Thank you.
There's a lot of bureaucracy involved in all that.
I find that hard to believe.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. So my ward is on the other side of Conestoga Road, and my area of Conestoga is in a business district, and it is only 25 miles an hour. And when I send, and just speaking to the concerns of the people that live on Lenore, when I send my kid to get a slice of pizza, I say, "Uh-uh. Go skirt around. Go up here, and then you can come out so you don't have to be, even be on Conestoga." Again, Conestoga and, say, Lancaster, the grading on some of the sidewalks, we have sidewalks, are extremely low, and it's easy to sideswipe. And it's 25. There's parks. There's, you know, orange cones in the middle of the road and everything, but no one does that. So, or no one goes the speed limit. So when it becomes an issue of greater safety with, really with children, from what I heard and speaking, speaking to it firsthand from a similar situation, actually, my situation is better because I have a traffic light there. We have a button that you can press to cross, and even when I press that button and cross, I swear, I still think I am, I might as well roll the dice on whether or not I make it across. So speaking to, I guess, to Jake, I would be voting for this? Okay. For this. So I'm voting with the neighbor. So whatever, whatever that is, I'll be voting, I'll be voting that way.
I think we are ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Wait, I want to request public comment on that amendment.
Having heard how everybody wants to vote, do you guys want a chance coming and talking to us? We've already had public comment. We're, we're not gonna do it again. I apologize, but we already had public comment on this. We can't go back.
That's okay. I just wanted to remind you that West Wayne Avenue is...
I hear what you're saying.
...Wayne Elementary also. So there's an advantage...
I understand what you're saying.
That's all.
I apologize. Thank you. We just, we gotta, we gotta keep moving. Guys, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, guys, for coming out. Moving on to ordinance number 2020-03, introduction, special purpose parking, handicap parking spaces. I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Chief, is this you?
Yes, Commissioner. This is in reference to our resurfacing of the parking areas on North Wayne Avenue in particular. So due to the size of the new handicap parking regulations, we added those spots. We also had to renumber some spots due to their larger size, if that would be a correct statement, Mr. Norsini. Sir?
Is there any public comment?
Hi, me again. Don't know if you're proposing an amendment, but if you are, because I don't know, it might be important to note that Article 2 of Radnor's Charter, Section 2.09, Meeting Procedures, semicolon, Administrative Policy, G, that's G, not G E E, Board Actions. No formal action shall be taken by the board except at a regular or special meeting with an opportunity provided for comments and questions by the public prior to the vote. In other words, if you're amending and you're about to take an official action per the charter, you gotta let the public talk about it. That's the charter. I'm quoting it verbatim, John Nagel's replacement in the Fifth Ward. I'm not making that up. More importantly, Commissioner Booker's comment earlier tonight, where it seems like Mr. Larkin is suddenly coming up with policy. The Pennsylvania Sunshine Act talks about how policies at meetings can be created, and it's through the board, not, or agency, not through the person. If this board somehow came up in executive session as to how it was going to run meetings, that would be a violation of the Sunshine Act because there's no exception. And the Commissioner Booker's earlier point, I haven't heard one person say up here on this dais, "This, Mr. Sherry, is the legislation in the form of a resolution or an ordinance that we passed and escaped your attention that allows the president of the Board of Commissioners to conduct a meeting this way." I just quoted from you the charter. You cannot continue to allow amendments to go forward substantively changing and thereafter taking official action without allowing the public to comment, just like it is also inappropriate to babble over me.
Mr. Sherry, this issue is not for discussion at this time. We're talking about handicapped parking. Do you have any comment with respect to handicapped parking?
I have to be prophylactic. I don't know if you're gonna amend it, Mr. Larkin.
I hear that you have no such comment.
That's my comment. Are you planning to amend it?
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Sherry.
That's not an answer. And because I don't have an answer, I can only speak prospectively as to what can happen.
Mr. Sherry, I need you to speak with respect to handicap parking, which I understand you to oppose based on your comment.
I do not oppose handicap parking.
Good. Now we're talking about handicap parking.
No, 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 no. I, however, cannot thoroughly weigh in because I don't know what amendments are gonna be brought up, and I'm not gonna have the ability to comment then per your past precedent, Mr. Larkin, meaning precedent of this evening.
Commissioner Larkin, why, why are you so strident on this? Why not provide an additional opportunity for public comment, as has been the policy when, when there's amendment? I don't see what, and I'm gonna commend you for doing as well, getting through as much as we have from this meeting, and only being nine o'clock, so we're doing great. So I appreciate that, but I think it does a disservice, and why do we want to engage in this? It's easier just to allow the additional piece, recognizing, you know, your desire, but let's, why not just do that? So I would implore that you do.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, and I'm not sure that this is going to work longer term, but this is what we put into place at the last meeting. I'm not gonna change it in the middle of this meeting. So for the purposes of the rest of today, we're gonna continue doing this. I'll have conversations with John Rice and Lisa going forward. We may do the same thing next week. We may not. But that's where we are right now.
All right. Regarding this, regarding this motion, are we, we're adding a bunch of new spots or we replacing the old ones with bigger spots?
We're still on public comment.
Yeah, before we jump there, do we have any additional public comment? Does anyone else oppose handicap parking? Is there any staff comment? Okay. Commissioner Booker, you were asking if this is adding new or if this is replacing old.
Right. You know, do we need more handicap spots? Is this, it seems like there's more here. Or are we just making the old ones wider and bigger?
Sir, we, due to the size, the new size of the parking lot, so if you remember the old spaces, they were from older standards or not acknowledged at the time. The three new spots, 151, 184, and 564 are new spots being added. They were not currently there. We did receive some complaints, I shouldn't say complaints, we received some concerns about better locations, center of the business district for them, where the old, if you recall, the old handicaps were at the end of sort of each parking zone on North Wayne, West Avenue, et cetera. Due to the size and change, all of our spots are numbered sequentially, so we can do, we can give you statistics reports on each parking space individually from Garrett Hill through Wayne. Those numbers, I believe, are six that are simply getting renumbered because of the space differences, size differences. We had to renumber the spots.
So Superintendent, these are similar to the ones that are in front of, for instance, Christopher's right now, correct? Those have been redone, center of the block, wider, is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner. And we had, we had a couple citizens request to get him center block so that no matter what store, restaurant...
Which direction they're going.
You could go, you're basically splitting the distance.
Thank you.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, who's speaking on this? Joe?
Yes. The reason for the proposal is there is a variety of screening categories for applicants to be members of the police department. One portion, one component, is a physical agility test. At present, the township, for a number of years, has relied upon the criteria and testing standards for the physical agility test that has been adopted by the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission, usually referred to as MOPAC. They run all of the schools that train individuals to be police officers. And there is a physical agility test that an applicant, well, one of the students has to pass in order to graduate, and that was the standard that we had. However, that standard is, the passing scores for each of the components is weighted depending upon the age of the applicant and the gender of the applicant. The Cooper Institute has come out with new standards. I believe they've been adopted by the state police. There has been recently some, I wouldn't say a flood of litigation, but a number of suits challenging these age and gender graded passing standards for a physical agility test. Our proposal is to adopt criteria through the Cooper Institute that has one passing score regardless of gender, regardless of age, and it changes one of the components. Currently, there are sit-ups, a 300-meter run, a 1.5-mile run, and a bench press. The bench press was eliminated and replaced with push-ups. So that's the rationale and the reason for the amendment.
Okay. Is there any public comment?
Hi, Dan Cherry Wayne. Just because I'm not sure whether you're going to amend this, so is to include people who live in Radnor Township and maybe have very, very bad criminal histories like Bill Spingler and Phil R. I figure I just have to comment.
Please confine your comments to the issue that's on to the board.
I am. I am talking about a prospective amendment.
Please moderate your tone.
I don't know if it is, because I don't know what's going to happen in terms of an amendment, your policy. I did want to point out this, though. In response to your comment, Commissioner Booker, I heard from Commissioner Larkin, and I hope I misheard, thankfully it's on videotape, that is quite helpful, that he and Lisa and John, by which I think he means John Rice, are going to have a talk about how meetings are run. How's that permissible, assuming you're meaning that that is exclusive? This board can only operate as a board. You can't exclude other members of the board on, in terms of that. You can't.
Please confine your comments to the physical fitness tests that have been discussed.
But I'm just responding to what you say extemporaneously. The fact that you're sloppy about it doesn't help you.
Please confine your comments to the issue that is before the board.
I don't know what's before the board. You could amend. That's the point. If you keep doing it, it's going to keep being brought up. Thanks.
Is there any staff comment?
Is there any Commissioner comment?
I would just.
Go ahead.
Hi. I would just ask about the changes in the standards to make them not gendered or based on age. Does that in any way reduce the standards that were previously held for men or women? Is it lowering the standards to pass the test?
For some individuals. Sorry about that. For some individuals, it would. If you're a 22-year-old male, the 1.5-mile run, you're going to get more time. You're going to get less time if you're a 55-year-old male or female. They've picked, I apologize, I don't have the, the time in front of me, but you, there's a precise 15 minutes to do a 1.5-mile run. It's 15 minutes and some seconds. It used to be graded so that there was a column with age category, five to, to eight-year age gaps, and a male column and a female column, so that depending on your age and gender, you had a different passing score. Now it's one passing score. That's the reason for the proposal, is to eliminate distinguishing factors. With respect to whether individuals who are not fit to do the job, the Cooper Institute that certifies these tests, we believe there will not be an individual who is not physically capable of performing the full duties of a police officer would get through our screening process.
Thank you.
Or your screening process, as the case may be.
Thanks very much.
I think my comments are similar, and I'm going to be very careful in my wording because I don't want it to come off the wrong way. With these new standards and making it uniform for both men and women, are we making it harder, are we, are we making it harder for qualified female candidates not to be moved to the front of the line?
I, I have to play lawyer and say, if you can't meet the standards, you're not qualified. The, the, the other part of this, we only permit to apply individuals who have already graduated from MOPAC. So they have gone through six months of fitness training, classroom training, field training, and they would have passed a very similar test just to graduate. So it's not, you know, this, this is nothing that's coming out of the blue. Every individual who applies for a police officer job in Pennsylvania with any borough, with any township, with any city, understands that there is going to be a fitness test, a physical agility test.
Okay. And as part of the application process, how much weight is put on the physical fitness test?
It's, it's pass/fail. The graded portions are a written exam, and then there's a graded oral interview. The background check is pass/fail. So it's, it's simply, you need to pass all four categories, what would now be push-ups, sit-ups, a 1.5-mile run, and a 300-meter run.
And can you tell me a little bit about what is the Cooper Institute?
The Cooper Institute started back in the 70s, and it was associated, I believe, with the University of Arizona and did the testing. They've evolved to where right now they simply review tests and studies that are done by third parties and publish what they believe to be the best standards. And their focus is on law enforcement. So Joe, so what, I'm sorry, Maureen, were you, so Joe, so what you're telling us is we're going to have the best qualified candidate physically, regardless of age, regardless of gender, as opposed to saying, well, this person is 22 and is in the prime of their life, but they can't meet it. But hey, we got this 90-year-old that can just run laps around you. And, and I remember at the Broad Street Run, I was waiting for my wife, I don't run, and it said, on the back of someone's shirt, it said, you just got passed by an 80-year-old. So, and he was, he was moving pretty good. So I would rather have the best qualified candidates, period, as opposed to having that anomaly 80-year-old who is just, you know, just, you know, just in great shape for his age. And that, this is doing, actually, the, what I said first as opposed to the latter, correct? Actually, no. The, the, the fitness test simply is, is a pass/fail, so you meet what is an independent agency has determined to, where you've demonstrated competency. Doesn't mean you're eligible for the Olympics. No, I, I'm aware of that. So, so your 20-year-old is getting the same test as a 70, as a 65-year-old. Yeah, but there's still a threshold they both have to pass. Yeah, which is pass/fail. It's the same, there's no curve because you're old. Correct. Or you're a female. We have a curve today. Yeah. The purpose of the. So is to get rid of it? Yes. Sounds good.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment?
My comment is that what I see is a lessening of standards. This reduces the standards of the police officers. By making one standard for all, you're, you're reducing the standards for some. And in general, my sense of it is it's, it's a reduction of the standard. So if this is not forced, I don't want to do it. I'm going to vote no on this.
Chief, Chief Lanning, what are your thoughts on this? If I can throw you on the spot. Before the, can I just? Yeah. Comment on that? I mean, the motivating factor here isn't just the availability of the standards. It's the potential liability. While I think at the end of the day, all of these lawsuits that are being filed against individ, municipalities who use passing criteria graded on gender and age are, you know, will ultimately fail, it's not a good thing to be sued. So the motivating factor of why now, why should we do this now, it's to close the door against any potential liability. And the lawsuit goes, you know, I'm a 25-year-old guy. If you had given me the 40-year-old woman's standards, I would have passed. And, and that's, that's the litigation that you will be avoiding.
So Joe, notwithstanding perhaps some of our questions to you, it is the intention of this legislation to bring the township into more perfect compliance with Title VII, specifically the Americans with Disabilities and the Age Discrimination Act. Is that correct?
And Title VII, yes.
Yeah.
Does this water down the actual test? Is this going to have a candidate that may not have been able to, to, to cut it the first time around? Is, is it watering down the fact that you're not changing the standard but changing benching or sit-ups? And I would like to get the chief's take on that. Is it, you know, are you watering it down? So, and that's a problem. If, you know, you're doing things because you don't want to get sued, but you don't have the most qualified or physically fit candidate there. So, Chief?
I think that our top concern when we bring a new person in is what is the end result to the citizens of the township from performance to ethics. With that, the manager runs one of the most rigorous background investigations and personal interviews with these officers. The standards are high here outside of that. However, to the counselor's position, we need to stay modern with the testing that goes on. The state of Pennsylvania, the MOPAC, sets a criteria of standards for officers to meet testing. That includes pass/fail, unwritten exams, and everything. We are remaining in line with that, staying current with the times, and still ensuring to you, as the commissioners and the residents, that we're giving you the best officers possible. I think this is a move that is in line with current, current physical fitness standards. I can't quote what the other states are, what other people are doing, but in the state of Pennsylvania, we are going to deliver you the best people possible based on this. And I do recommend this going forward.
All right. So you do recommend it. That's what I'm hearing.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment?
So you're saying, Superintendent, that even though the physical standards might be different, there are other standards that we are looking for in our officers that not everybody is going to live up to, correct?
Yes, there are other measurable factors that I believe only this township gets out of their people.
Perfect. Thank you.
I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to one. Moving on to ordinance number 2020-01, amending the code of the township of Radnor, Chapter 267, vehicles abandoned. I so move. Is there a second?
A second.
Public comment? Oh, actually, first, is this Chief, is this yours?
This is a, a small change in words from and to or, so it gives us more opportunity to react to citizen complaints.
Thank you. Public comment?
On the topic of citizen complaints, are we planning on potentially offering an amendment to change any of the other part of the code?
Mr. Sherry, please discuss the issue which is on the floor.
I have to talk about it prospectively. I don't know what the issue's going to be when you vote on it. You set that precedent.
Mr. Sherry, please focus on the issue which is on the floor.
Can't. I have to talk prospectively.
Mr. Sherry, if you're unable to discuss the issue on the floor, please return to your seat.
That would go for anybody wanting to talk about anything, because now, under your precedent that you unilaterally imposed, Mr. Larkin, anybody can change anything. I am worried about all of the other hundreds of provisions of Radnor's code.
Mr. Sherry, please focus on the issue of vehicles.
I'm focusing on your behavior and the mischief it leads to. Thanks.
That is not before you.
Commissioner Larkin, kindly, kindly refrain from badgering the public. It's just, it's not helpful.
Badgering, badgering. There's badgering going on, but it's not.
Is there any additional public comment?
I call that badgering.
Hearing none, is there any staff comment? Hearing none, is there any Commissioner comment?
Yeah, I thought this was, this is not Jake's resolution, right? This is, so, so Chief, Superintendent, so what's, what's this, what's this doing again here? This is, what's the, the, you said to change an and to an or? Or, or but to an and? What, what's, if, but, or, what did you say?
Right, and is, so we'll change it to or.
Could you, a microphone, yeah.
I apologize. We are changing it from the and to the or, just so the officers have other options. We needed to make two reasons why we'd like to have each, each part be a, a single part of what a vehicle would be abandoned.
So this makes it easier to tow abandoned car?
Correct. And then, and just to, just to make the commissioners aware, it doesn't, we send a certified letter. This is, towing is a secondary aspect to what we do.
And I believe I saw 10 days in there, correct, Superintendent?
Yes, nothing else is changing. It was just, we had to have both parts to that, and it was hindering.
Which is more than enough notice.
Have, have we had a problem with this lately? Has there been more abandoned cars? This has been an issue, or what's, what's driving this?
Exactly, Commissioner. We have just had situations where, based on the way this got written, we had to have the two elements to get a tow. There's still the, the 10 days, there's a letter that's mailed out to the vehicle owner or the property owner, depending on what the scenario is, if there's no tag. Sometimes all we have is a VIN. So this would just help the officers be able to react to these situations that happen all over the township. It's not just a parking lot. It really does happen a lot, actually, on private properties, and there's several issues related to that.
What, what do you think's causing people to ban, people are banning these cars? Are they breaking down, or is this something that's new in the township? It's, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with, I haven't seen a lot of this.
I, I would say we probably get one or two complaints a month. Sometimes we get busier at different times. Vehicles could break down. You could have a loved one who is deceased and the vehicle remains on a property. You could have a construction company that leaves something, a secondary company that leaves a vehicle that never runs on your property, and somebody has to take responsibility for that, especially in reference to the VIN. And if it gets disposed of and destroyed, there has to be a paper trail.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get to, is there any underlying issues that we should address with this, or is this, this is just?
No, between what we have codes related-wise and this, I think we have a good joint approach to these vehicles on properties, or if they're leaking fluids or any other problems.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Abel off the dais. Moving on to ordinance number 2020-05, creating a new chapter of the, creating a new chapter 183 of the Radnor Township Code, Emergency Response Rapid Entry Systems, requiring the installation of locked boxes for emergency response and providing regulations for the installation, I assume thereof. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Chief, this goes to you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm very excited to bring this forward. This has been a joint approach to increasing public safety. In today's day and age, I think we are aware of, of active shooters, other types of severe incidents that require rapid police response and EMS response. However, if you take a look at this ordinance, this is to help assist from a simple heart attack in an office building, reduce volunteer time on a fire alarm in the middle of the night at a, a commercial building, or give us access to check a, what I would call a multi-hazard building or multi-occupancy. I'm very excited to say that we work with the Brumall Fire Company, Chief Dan Kincaid, the Radnor Fire Company, Deputy Chief Michael McGuire. We've notified the Brumall Fire Company, and our codes department have worked hand-in-hand to have a system that benefits everybody. Many municipalities, it only works kind of for the police or the fire, the AMOS. This will be a three-tiered response, EMS, police, and fire, which will allow us to gain rapid access. Our emergency manager, Sergeant Chris Gluck, is here and has worked out several of the details, one of them being security and accountability. This will be a three-tiered response EMS, police, and fire, which will allow us to gain rapid access. Our emergency manager, Sergeant Chris Gluck, is here and has worked out several of the details, one of them being security and accountability in case there's questions related to that. But I believe it is a very proactive step for this township to consider this and vote on it.
Is there any public comment?
Doug Felsky with Radnor Fire Company, past deputy, past chief. We endorse, very much endorse the ordinance. The Knox Box system has been in effect, we've been using this for roughly 35 years, I guess. We have keys in the fire trucks and secure it, and we can access any building that has a box. The concern I have with this particular one is that in, what is it, 183-2 definitions, it says or similar brand, it says Knox Box or similar brand. The concern is that we may need to have multiple keys to fit different situations. So far, we've limited all the boxes in Radnor Township to Knox Boxes, and prefer to have it be the same standard throughout.
Could I just say something to that effect? Sorry, Sergeant Chris Gluck.
We're going to zip back to staff comment in a minute.
Surely, sir.
I'd love to hear what you have to say, but let's do it then.
Yeah, just make up the order that we go in, it's cool, as we go along. By the way, it seems like a very, very good ordinance to be introduced, but I am concerned it could be amended so as to change from Emergency Response Rapid Entry System to Social Response Rapid Entry Systems. And, because I don't know what's officially coming before this board for the vote, I do think it's rather important to ask this board whether they're proposing any amendments to this, because I won't be able to answer it. Nothing? Well, just like John Rice doesn't know what badgering it is. Apparently, we don't have a good answer yet, despite now five attempts.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry. Is there any additional public comment? Hearing none. Staff comment? If you could, this is the perfect time. Thank you.
Sorry, sir. Sergeant Chris Gluck, Radnor Police. In terms of the question that was brought up about similar devices, that is not the case. We would like to stick to the Knox Box program. The initial boxes that are already in place will be, continue to be used. And the system that we're looking to move forward with is more with the times, with in terms of cloud-based administrative software, so we can keep track of everything. That is also based on the Knox Box itself, through that Knox program.
So may I just ask some clarification? This is for all new development. It would be private and commercial would be required to provide a box for emergency response people to get into the premises?
Rich, that's the way it's written. Anybody else that wants to utilize this, it would be voluntary?
Anybody else would utilize this would be voluntary?
Existing facilities, correct.
My concern with it is, with the voluntary, just the nature of it is, we are requiring that the government be allowed to get into the person's house.
For new development, new land development.
For new land development.
Right.
And we were saying, well, it's going to be an emergency responder, but it's a lockbox that the government can use if they deem it an emergency. Isn't this, I mean, this is like, is there constitutional issues with this? I'm concerned that there would be.
In what way?
That would be a violation of the right to, the constitutional right to privacy. In other words, it should be voluntary for every new development, not mandatory for new development. Notwithstanding that only, I understand that only first responders would ever use it, but to the extent that there was someone who was, that was not following the law, that somebody else could use it and abuse the ability to get in. I don't think that's a good idea.
So as I understand it, this would only give access to the common areas in multi-unit buildings. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. It would only be the common area. So if we had an apartment building with a certain issue, we're not accessing anyone's apartment. We're strictly accessing the common area to go to where the emergency is, and then we'll determine the factor once we get to that location.
All right. And it says it does not apply to one and two-family dwellings?
Correct.
Okay, I thought, it doesn't apply.
Let me speak from experience with this. So I have a store in Havertown, and I have a, I mean, I think that this is honestly Big Brother gone absolutely wild for a bunch of reasons. I'll touch about my business in a minute. People spend millions of dollars on the facade, and then you have to put an unsightly lockbox, yay big, next to your door. That's one issue.
Commissioner, that's not correct.
No. Actually, it is correct in my, in my situation it was.
It is not required to be next to the door. It's in proximity, and most of them put them on the side of the building.
Yeah, well, it's not, 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 not in my situation. So, well, I am in Havertown, and before you know it, it's going to be mandatory. They have, they have access to my store. These things, are they, or are they not electronically timestamp of when you get in?
Through this new system, the key itself that is used by the emergency responder is locked into what's called a Key Secure Six Box, which is secured inside the emergency vehicle. Each individual person who has access to that key has to enter a PIN code that would be significant to them, such as the last four digits of their social security number. That will create a timestamp. We've also worked in the thought that when the key is accessed by the first responder, to contact the dispatch and make a timestamp in the call itself.
Okay.
In order to return the key back, they would also respond to the dispatch and ask for another timestamp to say that the key's been returned, and the key will be locked back into that system. And it will also create a timestamp in the cloud-based software, which we would have access to to correspond to calls.
But not necessarily, so only on where the lockbox is for the key, but not necessarily into that building?
Not the building itself, sir. You're correct. But the reason the key is secured to that extent is so we have the accountability, so no one else would have access.
It's not a trust issue with the police, or a fire, or EMS, but there are a lot of keys that are going to be floated out there. And there is.
No, sir, there's not. The keys are particular to Radnor Township.
So there'd be keys for the police, keys for every fire truck, keys for the EMS? In the EMS, okay. And it's the same key that would be consistent for every single box?
Yes, sir.
Okay? So if someone was able to duplicate that key, you're dealing with a huge problem, correct?
The key cannot be duplicated. There is a specific code through the Knox brand itself.
Okay. So I believe you, but I also hear that you can't break into the cloud, and my credit card is secure. And so what you're telling me now sounds really good until the day that happens, and...
So let's take Radnor Fire Company as an example.
Actually, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
You've got to let him finish. I apologize, but you're up next.
So where was I? So that is a major concern, that eventually you're having one key, and then if that key does get duplicated somehow, then it would be up to the business owners to go ahead and change that law. It's just a, it's a big issue that, you know, really what I have. But you're saying that this is only, that this is voluntary, 100% voluntary? And not voluntary for all new land, or is it mandatory?
Mandatory.
It's mandatory.
It's mandatory, I believe, for the codes division.
Okay. So it'll be mandatory for all new land? So yours...
For businesses in a above-three unit, multi-occupancy, not private property, sir.
So for a business, so you would have the right to enter into my business? If it's a McDonald's, to actually enter into the actual inside, correct?
For an emergency purpose.
Okay.
This doesn't expand their...
I shouldn't interrupt. I just asked, I mean, please.
Yeah, so you could go into any business. I understand that banks are treated, and pharmacies are treated differently, but you could go into any retail location if you wanted to. Am I correct? You go into Target or CVS, or, not CVS, Target, or, you know, TJ Maxx. Is that correct?
So, so I hope I'm answering your question, Commissioner. It won't change our ability to enter. We could throw a ladder up tomorrow to a property we're at. We would, the guidelines for entry into a property would remain the same. Nothing would change, whether we have Knox Boxes or not. We would attempt to gain entry through whatever means we have, including forcible entry if warranted. So we wouldn't, the key doesn't change our right to enter a property or not enter a property. We would have to have very exigent circumstances to take that respective action regardless of the Knox Box system.
Again, if you have to throw a ladder or break into a window, then we obviously know that you were there. I would know that you were there. If you put a code in, and you go in, and no one checks it, or I don't know if it sends a system to you, I don't ever know. But I know if my window's broken, or I know something, what to look for. I think that allowing for this, again, is Big Brother way too far, and when it comes, it just opens up, it opens up the case of, are we going to need more insurance for this because of this? Because there's really no way to keep track other than what you have on your end. But as a small business owner, and as a real estate owner, which I am, how do I protect myself from my end? And again, I'm not saying that you guys are doing anything illegal. I'm just saying that there's a lot of stuff out there. Again, you spend, you spend millions of dollars on facades and build-outs, and then now it's forced. And it's not any land development if a business changes ownership. So you may not do anything with the actual business, the building, but if I sell it to you, now I have to put the lockbox there. It's like that, okay, it was like that in Havertown, so. But I just think that it's a potential violation of one's civil rights, search and seizure, and it's a real slippery slope of Big Brother.
I'm not seeing the civil rights and the search and seizure. Can you explain that? I don't understand that. I can tell you, in the case of Radnor Fire Company, with the trucks and equipment there, there are less than 10 keys. They are secured in the type of box that the officer spoke about. That keypad is accessible only with a code to remove that key, which then gets you to that Knox Box on the exterior. I can tell you, in Radnor Township, extremely rare to find one on the front of the building, mostly on the side of the building. From there, it is a key into that box to get a key that is in there. It is a very, very secure system. I can tell you, the alternative, as a firefighter, I love the alternative, because the alternative is a lot of fun, and it's what I trained for, and it's exactly what the superintendent talked about, and that is taking an axe and bashing the window and getting in. Rest assured, if that pharmacist is down and behind a locked door, and there is an EMS situation there, we're getting in. If there's fire in there, and, you know, in a building, we're getting in. This enables us to lessen loss of property, less the destruction on the building is secure, and it is a very, very necessary tool as a first responder, especially in the middle of the night, when you're out there and you have to access, and you don't know what you're facing. So this is, this is something going forward I think is a must. It's needed. It's time-tested and true. As Chief Felsky said, you know, 30-plus years we've been using it, I bet the complaints are very, very minimal in terms of any problems with them. But also, standardizing helps a lot in terms of what is in the resolution, in terms of standardizing, in terms of the technology on Knox. This is what I consider another tool on our trucks, and another tool that we provide to EMS, police, and fire responders. And it is one of the most critical and necessary tools we have when we're out there in the middle of the night, trying to access and determine what's going on in the building, what the situation is. So I would implore the other commissioners to support this.
Let me give you, let me give you an example, Damian. So let's say a smoke alarm or fire, carbon dioxide alarm is going off in a large, multi-unit building.
Let's use Radnor Financial Center as an example.
Yeah, okay, fine, whatever. And you have to go into three offices to find out it's a false alarm. And it's a false alarm, no problem, but you went into three or four or five. Are you going to contact that business owner and say, hey, we had to go in there?
It's almost immediate. I can tell you that Chief McGuire, as well as Assistant Chief McGuire, and many of our officers carry in their phones the contacts for the property owners in a lot of Radnor facilities. Where they don't have it, it's on the radio to Fire Board down in Delaware County to find out who the business owner is and who the emergency contact is. I can tell you, probably seven, eight times out of 10, that I'm on a fire call, it's while we're assessing that, that that person is either on the phone or in cases and businesses in Wayne, they're standing next to us within minutes. So those property owners are right there.
So what is the, what is the protocol? If, I mean, do you leave notes, or if there was nothing and you just happened to open it up and you didn't go?
That's a follow-up by, generally by Fire Board, or the police in this case. The police are generally there in those situations, and they're there to help.
My question is, if you enter the threshold, if you, not even enter the threshold, if you open the door, you open that lockbox to get a key to that door, what is your duty to the business owner or property owner? Is it, oh, we didn't have to go, and we just checked, it wasn't there, we're not going to say anything? Or is there some kind of written, or some kind of communication that, hey, we had to go into your property?
Commissioner, to answer your question, the police fire and EMS, if they're dispatched to something, they generate an incident report, any one of those three. And if not, if all three respond at the same time, all three do individual respective reports. The Radnor Police is a set procedure, and oftentimes we find unlocked doors at burglar alarms, other emergencies, fire alarms. We will document that on the incident report, attempt to make contact with any responsible landowner or property owner or lessee. And further, we always leave what we call a yellow card. It's an old-school style piece of paper where we write the incident number, and we leave it in the mailbox or in the main area, saying, we were inside your property, please call for details.
So you will leave some written?
We will leave something written, and also, if we do have to force entry, the officer will call a supervisor. I mean, clearly, if somebody's laying on the floor or something like that, they'll notify forcible entry.
So, so could you put in an amendment that as soon as that lockbox is opened to that business, all those will be notified that it was open? And, I mean, so without, you know, without really letting that business owner know, or that person know, I have a tough time with it there, but I think that there needs to be a protocol.
I think as the superintendent, yeah, as the superintendent outlined, there are procedures for all of this in terms of notification of the building owner, as well as the property manager.
Are you proposing an amendment?
Yeah, I am.
Well, state the amendment.
That is, I would propose an amendment that as soon as that lockbox is open, or that key goes into the amendment, that would generate a report whether you chose not to enter or to enter, to either the property owner and the occupant.
Aren't there administrative regs that will go along with this? That you guys will follow process and procedure that you follow?
I'm sure, but I would like it in writing, so someone knows that their property has had somebody go into it.
Mr. President? In a second. So we're going to call the vote. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nay.
Okay, so you guys don't, okay.
I'm just, I want to understand, and Officer Gluck, perhaps you can elaborate. You guys obviously have your process and procedures, correct? To me, that seems like a procedure or a part of your process. Does that need to be part of the ordinance, or does that, or the amendment, or?
We fully plan to create a policy which would follow along with this, to make sure that there are checks and balances in place. And just to, also, so you know, in your business, as a part of the Knox Boxes itself, not only are you adding keys, but you're also adding an emergency contact list for us to reach out to if we do make contact.
Why not have that in place prior to, why not have this in place, sorry, Bob, why not have this in place prior to this vote?
Mr. President, both departments have standard operating procedures and regulations. This is already in those. The calls were already made, so we're actually adding more onto something that's already exists. Both departments already made contact, so we're adding more that's already, it's already being done. Contact is already being made. This is what they do. This is already in their standard operating procedures. So we're reinventing the wheel in what they already do. We are. You are.
You're requiring, you're requiring business owners and property owners to give a key to potentially thousands and, you know, or millions of dollars' worth of items, items that can't be replaced, family items, heirlooms. And again, I'm not saying that there's any malfeasance. I'm saying that you are doing that, and I personally don't feel that there is, and for me, I'm not comfortable with the checks and balance with it. And I'm not saying that, and you are forcing anybody that sells a business to do that. You are forcing that. It is, you know, I mean, it's Big Brother saying, hey, if you want to sell the building, we want a key. And I just think that's ridiculous.
Commissioner, it's new construction, in terms of what we're talking about, and I would encourage you. I've done it several times. I've done it several times. I would encourage you, please come down and do ride-alongs with us. I know you've done them with the police. Come down to the fire department, do ride-alongs with us. You will see how this process and this procedure works. You'll hear the radio communication, you'll hear the contact with Fire Board, the police, how business owners are contacted when we're on-site and we're investigating. I encourage you to come see the processes and procedures that are already in place.
You'd be comfortable putting the key to your house in a lockbox with digits and giving me the code with digits, and you would check every day?
Not you, no. I wouldn't be comfortable with you, Commissioner. But I would be comfortable with the Radnor Police Department, Radnor Fire Company, and EMS, because I know the procedures, I know the process. I have done it myself, time and time again, plenty of thousands of calls that I've done.
But it's one of those things that you could adequately see, if I put my code in, that I went in your house. So then you're not 100% comfortable.
Again, we're not discussing residences that are that small. We're only discussing new developments, and we're only discussing developments which are more than two units in size, and we're only talking about access to common areas. We're not talking about anybody's homes. Am I right, officers?
Correct.
In an apartment building, you'd go into someone's apartment for a?
Only to the common areas.
Okay.
In which there is a diminished or a serious expectation.
It's a common area. If there's something going on behind that door, we're going to take the door. You're going to know that we were there in that apartment building. I guarantee you're going to know we were there.
Sir, if I could just add this, we're actually making this stricter. We're making it more accountable by adding this system. We're making it so we can say who went in and when, and timestamp it, and the reason for it, and the incident report behind it. At the moment, there are Knox boxes all over this township, and the keys are here now for emergency responders. They exist. So what we're doing is actually creating further accountability for that, so we can follow up and see what happened and what occurred, and we will make contact, so we know, you know that we're in your property.
If I change my lock to my business or my house, how do I change the, is there a cost to do that or not? Or just call you up and say?
That's actually one of the great parts of the Knox box system. And again, I do want to stress, it is existing, something that the commissioners previously approved, and we already initiated. This is just a newer level. But that's the beauty of this. If you wanted to change your locks due to some other reason, you could do it instantly, and we'll get you into the box, and you can change anything. You could change your locks 20 times a year if you wanted to, if you had different security issues. That's kind of the nice thing about this.
But I have to call you to open up to put the new key in, correct?
Correct. And our codes officers and police officers will be out to assist you with that at any time.
So the codes, so as well as the police codes officer have it as well?
We would open it for the codes department, meaning anybody, we would help if they would. But it would only be in the police cars, fire, only police, fire, and EMS, as stated.
And you would need, you would not access these, I mean, you would need to be called there on an emergency call, right? I mean, it's not like you're just going to walk by and go into somebody's business. I mean, you have to be summoned there, correct? Yes.
Correct. We would have to be summoned there for a reason, otherwise you'd be illegally entering.
For an alarm going off, so a reason to need to get into the building.
So I do actually have a question for John Rice, actually. I know that you had suggested that you were uncomfortable with it being Knox Box or a similar brand, and Officer, you had said the same thing. The legislation that we have in front of us literally does say a small or large box of Knox Box brand or similar brand. My question would be, could we vote on the introduction this week and then bring it back for our next meeting, deleting the or similar brand, or do you think that's going to create an issue?
Just to delete or similar brand?
Yeah, just or similar brand. It seems like it's not a substantive amendment to me.
Yeah, I mean, tonight's introduction, you can introduce it with that deleted, but the similar brand was added because Knox Box is a brand. So, I mean, knowing that Knox Box is what you're going to utilize, it's really going to be up to the police department and EMS to select the brand, but I added that, so that Rocks Box wouldn't complain that, you know, they had no possibility of possibly being a vendor for this, even though this is in a vendor situation.
It doesn't look like the police get authority to choose which brand is picked, though. The developer gets that.
Well, it's going to be up to, I mean, if it's a developer, it's going to be up to the township to approve a land development plan with conditions. And if Knox Box is what EMS and the police are using, that's going to be the condition. But, I mean, you know, whether you leave it in or out, Commissioner Larkin, I don't think it matters, but we've done a couple other of these ordinances where we didn't use a brand at all. I mean, and that was an issue that had come up in other municipalities, because Knox Box is a brand. I don't know whether the names of the other brands are, but that is a brand. So I put that in there as a, I put that in there just so that some other brand would not complain that somehow the Knox Box.
And Chief Felsky, correct me if I'm wrong, but another brand would force us, for instance, in the fire company, to put another box in the truck in terms of it and retrofit it, and that's quite an added expense to that. Not only that, you're talking about training issues there, right? You don't know when you come out of a fire truck or a police car what the box is going to be there, you know? Do you have to bring both keys? Do you take one? Do you have to go back? You know, it's a, frankly, it's a hassle.
I think it's a township's decision on the brand. I mean, Knox Box could sell to some other company and become Rocks Box or?
I was going to say, I would prefer to keep that language in for that sort of circumstance. If there's a decision made by those who are qualified to make this decision, that that brand's no longer the best out there, or they go out of business, or the like, I would, you know, this allows for those circumstances, but it doesn't sound like, I don't know, that we, you know, us putting in just one brand into a new ordinance, it's a little funny. So I would prefer to keep that language if we're talking about that.
And I think ultimately, it's going to be up to the township in approving anything, and anybody that voluntarily wants to participate in this program is going to have to participate in a program that the fire and EMS are comfortable with and are familiar with. So, you know, that's why it was added, because it had come up in some other municipalities that we've dealt with, that it's just a brand. You know, and the brand could change. Could be sold, it could become something else. So you're covered.
Move to make this a voluntary, so change 183-3A to be a voluntary requirement?
I assume you're seconding his motion. I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Well, we don't talk about it, right?
It's an amendment, so no. All in favor, say aye.
I mean, I, this, I mean, we should, these are substantive.
No, it's not. Voluntary versus, right now, it's required, just making a voluntary.
Well, I mean, that's a big thing, whether you're forcing someone to give someone the key to your house or your business. Absolutely. It's just, I don't know, I think that these.
So do you agree with me, it should be voluntary? I mean, you called the vote, right? So did the vote.
And so all against, say nay.
Yeah, it should be voluntary.
Motion fails for lack of majority, 2-2-5.
I understand it's a good idea for saving people and for the first responders, and I understand, I understand their position, and I recognize that it's a good thing, and I would encourage everybody to do it. As you know, and, but what I have a problem with is forcing every development to have this. And in the unlikely event that one out of 1,000, there's somebody that abuses that, or finds a way to break into it, I would make it voluntary, so that's my only issue with it.
If a key gets stolen, that key's out there, correct? If you have a bad employee, or an angry, someone's angry that day, and they steal the key, right? You'd have to get that key back.
But then, wouldn't you just change the PIN?
No, it's not a PIN. If I'm, no, 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 no. If I, if I'm a, if I steal a key, let's just say I'm driving the police car, and I get your PIN, Officer Gluck, and I take that key, right when you're not paying attention, and I put that key in my pocket, I could go run around Radnor until you find me with that key. Is that correct?
So, at the moment, the police do not have a Knox key, just so you know.
If that's the case, if I?
The system that we're putting towards is this system that is completely secured unless a PIN is entered into it with a timestamp.
Correct.
So we would be able to follow back to what occurred.
Correct. But if somehow I got access to someone's PIN erroneously, or I had a bad day, and I have a key, and I stole a key somehow, I could go around to any of those lockboxes in Radnor and open them, am I correct?
If you had access to that key, then you could access those boxes. However...
You just put three "somehows" together.
No.
I mean, you did.
If you have, if you get access to that key, you could work for the company. You could buy it on eBay. This stuff happens.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to call the vote. I think we've talked this to death. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes 5 to 2. Moving on to item K, Ordinance 2020-06, Introduction, Amending Chapter 263 of the Ordinance of Radnor, Known as the Tree Ordinance. This is me, so I will speak to it. The proposal that I'm putting forward is directly responding to the issue that we had at the traffic island off of 476. The concept is that the township should not, if we are going to cut down any trees, whether that's on public or private property, if it's township money, if it's taxpayer money, if it's money that we got from a third party, if we're the people who are going to cut down the trees, then we should be the people who, number one, share that information with the Shade Tree Commission. We have them for a reason. And number two, the plan that we put in place, that we send to Shade Tree, should include not just the trees that we want to cut down, but also our plans to reforest somewhere else. I'm taking advantage of the existing portions of the Shade Tree Ordinance, dealing with the equivalency ratios that we have, and I would ask the Shade Tree Board to evaluate our proposal, both to cut and to reforest based on those equivalency rates. I will give you guys a heads up. I'm going to move not to vote on this tonight, or to introduce it tonight, but instead to send it to Shade Tree for their comment, because I think if they're the ones who are going to be administering it, then they're the people who should probably get a chance to weigh in on it before we pass it one way or another. So with that foretelling, I'm going to move for this, for the, I guess I'm going to move forward this introduction, knowing that I will eventually move to send it to Shade Tree. Is there a second?
Second.
Public comment?
What? We're moving it so to send it to Shade Tree? Did you just see what happened with that last agenda item, where you were asking John Rice, can we take language out? And Commissioner Farre is proposing amendments, and then Commissioner Farre, in a moment of rare clarity, from goes, gee, this sounds substantive, maybe we should talk about it. Do you understand the mischief that keeps going on with this? You've now introduced something with the idea that you're not going to do anything with it. You're just going to kick it along. Why don't you wait until they weigh in, if you have an idea? Again, have some consistency with these meetings. Give the public an opportunity to comment on something before you take official action. How is it official action to vote on something?
You were doing great before. Please focus on the issue.
And then shade, and then send it to Shade Tree. Why don't you already have that data from Shade Tree? Why don't you already have it if you're going to be bringing it on to an agenda item? An agenda item that you could change. Again, this shows the mischief of your approach, Mr. Larkin. Please cease and desist from this bad way of running a meeting. It's ridiculous. And by the way, this is a welcome change. When I sit over there, John Rice angrily mutters at me. It's boring. Thanks. Yeah, kind of funny. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Sherry. That was actually kind of funny. Is there any staff comment? Okay, coming back to the commissioners, I'm going to move to send this to Shade Tree instead of introducing it tonight. Can I get a second?
Second.
So, John, can you explain exactly how this works, though? I want to get some clarity on how this dovetails with the existing ordinance, and how, what's the mechanism here?
Sure. So this would literally create a new section in the chapter dealing with Shade Tree. And I can call up my specific language here.
How does it work with the formula?
So with the formula, what would end up happening is, the township, at any time that it was going to cut down trees, would be required to send a plan of removal to the Shade Tree Commission, proposing that removal, together with a number of species and location of an equivalent replanting, which complies with the tree replacement formula. Tree replacement formula is defined term in the Shade Tree Ordinance, and it's, I'm going to get the numbers wrong, but it's fundamentally, if you cut down one big tree, you have to put in six small trees or something.
Right. But you're allowed to take five out per year?
Correct. The concept would be that Shade Tree would then have three options. It could either approve the plan of removal, defer action for a single 30-day period in which to obtain the comment of other township boards and commissions prior to ruling on the plan of removal. What I had in mind there was specifically, if the goal was the township was going to replant all of its trees in, let's say, Anki Park, and the township keeps replanting trees in Anki Park, till eventually Anki Park is nothing but forest, at some point, the Parks Board is probably going to want to have a comment on this. So my thought is that Shade Tree should be permitted to kick this to Parks for a single 30-day period. I say "single" period because I don't want it to go to Parks indefinitely, and then it also goes to open space, and it also goes to aid other people, and we never get to take action. Its third option would be to deny the plan of approval, stating the reasons for such denial, in which case, there could be an appeal taken to this board, and we would be the people who ultimately signed off, but it would be a public meeting, and we would be held accountable to the residents in the same way that anyone else would be.
About the emergency provision?
For emergency provisions, you have to submit a plan of removal, but you have to submit it after the removal takes place, and the only thing that you're asking for is not permission, since you've already done it, but you set forth the equivalent trees that you will be planting. Again, Shade Tree doesn't have the ability to tell you not to cut down the trees in this instance, because they've already been cut down, but they would have the ability to tell you that your plan of removal is unacceptable.
Commissioner Larkin, just a quick question. Is this a reaction to the clearcutting, or is this, was this planned on the agenda?
So this was actually an ordinance that I had initially proposed in response to a earlier cutting of trees. And I had suggested that it would be a good idea, but I didn't take any additional action. Now that we have had the incident with the trees that were cut down at the island off 476, I feel like it's important to actually formalize this. So, yeah, it's a reaction, but this is not the first time we've talked about this formula.
So how about taking down an invasive tree? Atlantis or something? Now, a sick tree is one thing, but a healthy invasive tree, is that, would that qualify, or?
So you'd have to ask Shade Tree that question. If you want to send this to Shade Tree, and you say, I want to take down a whole bunch of Norway maples, I can imagine Shade Tree saying, yeah, they're invasive, let's get rid of them, and replant a appropriate number of trees elsewhere. I could also imagine Shade Tree saying, yeah, they're invasive, but they've been here for 150 years. There's no reason to cut them down. They won't pose a danger to anyone, and they're already here, and they're already here to stay. Similar with respect to trees that are in bad condition. I can imagine Shade Tree saying, yeah, they're in bad condition, but they're in the middle of a forest. What are you doing? Leave them alone. They might also say, this is a great opportunity to plant new trees that are going to replace the ones that are dying, because of course, if the tree just falls down, it might not injure anyone, but we're not necessarily replanting it either. So I'm going to say, leave it to Shade Tree, they'll make the decision.
Okay.
So my motion in second is to send this to Shade Tree. I guess we'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Well, President Larkin?
Oh, sorry.
So just a reminder to the residents that, I don't know, it was April, March, April of last year, we had the tree fall in Anki Park, and there was a discussion, and the township requested not just the tree that fell, but take 10 or 12 more trees out of that area. And I opposed that, because, again, this wasn't the first time that an issue happens, and we're going into a wooded area, so we put baseball fields with woods surrounding it, and there's the threat of a tree falling at any moment. So I opposed, I opposed the idea of taking down more trees than I thought was necessary. Well, it wasn't just that. So after I opposed it, then the township paid a tree company to come back in to the same area a week later and remove 10 or 20 more trees. So at that, at that point, I raised the issue with the board, and asked that we have a long-term strategy on how we deal with our trees in parks and wooded areas. Trees in the right of way, I think, are a different story, and everybody on this board agreed it was a good idea, the township agreed it was a good idea, and we're still, you And we're still, you know, we still ended up with 470, the issue of 476. So I guess my question to President Larkin is, are we still planning to do a long-term strategy with all the key players? Shade Tree, Parks, residents, who have a voice?
In terms of a long-term strategy for this ordinance, I think this ordinance does some positive things long-term. I think that there are some other longer-term issues that I certainly want to talk about. I had initially contemplated talking about combining some of our boards, and I think that there's some synergies to be had there. Getting people talking to one another is a good idea. So, yeah, I guess that ends, I hope that answers your question.
Well, last, last year, you recall, we tried to get a meeting, a joint meeting of the Shade Tree Commission, the Board of Commissioners, and whoever else, I mean, the public, it was going to be a public meeting. And we were unable to coordinate a date when commissioners were available. Shade Tree had put forth several dates, and it was not, it was not something that materialized. So, you know, I do think that that's a worthy thing. We should do that. And I see the conservancy shaking their head in the back. You know, I'd like to make an, I think we should make another attempt at that. We tried it. But we need commitment from, from what I saw at the time, commissioners, to attend that meeting. We put the date, put a bunch of dates out there, and nobody, either there was no response, or people couldn't attend any of the dates. So perhaps we could try again and see if we can do that. Because I do think that, so not only this as an issue, but definitely the trees in the right-of-way are an issue as well. And that's something that we need to consider and address in the township. So I would propose that we try to do that again.
Mr. President?
I would, whoop.
If I may, I know that we hear about kids on the freeway in Conestoga Road and being safe. We talked about the tree that came down on the concession stand. That while there were people working at the concession stand, it was a good thing they weren't by their car when it came down. We talked about an additional 20 trees that were taken down, but those were hollowed out. So we talk about the safety of the kids, is do we take those down or not, because they were near ball fields? I know we talked about the trees at 476 and what the condition of those trees were. And I heard about the plush landscape and that, but the condition of those trees, that, I know we do have a few photographs there. If we can get to those. Some of those there, the condition of those trees, those, that's what was taken down there. I know the conservancy has big, had been a big one there, and had gone to Parks Board and talked about the vines taking over the trees and killing them at Philippone, Bo Connor, here at Anki Park, also at the Willows, killing the trees there. I know we have a lot there that I'm concerned that the vines are going to be taking down the wires leading to the Willows Mansion. That we've got to have a concern there as well with some of those. It's not an easy decision. Staff is not in with just clearcutting trees randomly for the sake of it. There's safety concerns. There was a tree that was going to come down on cars over here on Brookside Avenue that we had taken down. There was a tree that we was going to come down on Conestoga Road that we begged Penn Dot to please remove. We begged the homeowner, please take it down, because school buses went by it every day and stopped there. Fortunately, the tree came down at 2:00 AM across the road. Thank God it came down when it did. I know we may be accused of that we like to take trees down. We argue and go round and round with John Hasek constantly. John, do you have to take these trees down? There were pine trees taken down right here by the playground. When Clement Chrome Park was being done, there were a lot of trees that we promised the residents that we would not take down. John Hasek looked at them and said they were going to have to come down. The trees, when they were taken down, collapsed because they were hollowed out. Those were near a playground. That had to come down. I understand the board's concern, because they catch a lot of the heat on these. The street trees, there are a lot of street trees that are going to have to come down. And I know with Matt and Jane Ghost, the tireless work that they have, there are a significant number of trees. And I know Bill, that there was, Eileen Brett came in front of the board and presented the number of trees. But last year was a record number of trees that were planted by the, by the township, with the hard work of the conservancy and the efforts that you put forward in the Big Tree Program, which was significant, the number of trees that were planted last year. 308 trees went in the ground. So that was a huge number. So I understand where the board comes from. Anytime a tree is taken down, there are a lot of trees that are going to fall within the wooded areas that will remain down. We're concerned about safety, liability of the township. I know a lot of times the Radnor Trail is shut down because there are concerns after the big windstorms of trees that are going to go down. It's interesting, a lot of the trees that fall during those storms. And you still see when it's closed down, people are climbing underneath the trees, which I'm still amazed that people who are still walking on there are climbing underneath these trees that have fallen. So I hear the board. I understand your concerns with these. But it's not out of any reason except safety and concern for the residents on that. So thank you very much, and I hear all the concerns that the boards has, and for all the groups that they have as well. Thank you.
All in favor of moving this to Shade Tree, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on to Resolution Number 2020-15, providing for the posting and 30-day public review of all public projects with a cost exceeding $7,500. Commissioner Abel.
All right, thank you. So do I introduce it, or do we?
Oh, I apologize. I'll move for the introduction of that ordinance. I totally spaced. Is there a second?
Resolution.
Resolution. Is there a second? Okay. With that, now I'm kicking to you. Could you lead us in, and then we'll have public comment?
Sure. So, I mean, the issue that you had raised prior to this resolution addressed the issue that would have, would have addressed the clearcutting of 476. But that's not the only, I mean, we've got a, we've got a, we're stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And, you know, look past what just happened at 476. And you don't, you don't have to look too far. You can look to two weeks, three weeks ago now, where Penn Medicine gave $250,000 to Radnor Township. And it was, and the township manager designated that to a pocket park that, you know, quite frankly, every time I pass it, nobody's there. Nobody uses it. So one resident uses it. When we're raising taxes to pay for, to pay for the fire department request. So this ordinance, or this resolution goes to prevent those types of actions of circumventing, circumventing the board's authority to authorize and appropriate money. It also prevents, in a project, say, 10 contracts under the value of 7, 7,500. So anything above 7,500 cumulative for a project would have to be posted for 30 days. And this gives residents an opportunity to see the project, see how much it costs, and be able to have a voice, have an opinion, comment, come in and talk. And I think it's a good way that we rebuild the trust with the residents.
Is there any public comment?
Dan Sherry, I like this resolution. You know what I also really like about this resolution? Is that Commissioner Abel confined what he is attempting to get passed to what is actually in the agenda, as opposed to what immediately preceded it, which was supposed to be the introduction of an ordinance and turned into some type of motion that we kicked something to Shade Tree. Commissioner?
Mr. Sherry, please focus on the issue.
I'm drawing a distinction from the issue to your issue, Mr. Larkin, which even though you are the board president, you couldn't actually do it. And therein lies the point, the point of notice. It's one word that Commissioner Abel didn't say about this resolution.
Mr. Sherry, please focus on the issue.
But that is one of the more important traits of his resolution, which I'm up here to talk about. Something's beeping. It's a nice distraction from what I usually have to hear, which is John Rice's muttering. Anyhow, what 30 days does is provides the public with not only more opportunity to comment, but with significant notice. That's a concept, Mr. Larkin, you should know about, because you purport to be a lawyer. Notice is a good thing. The public, when it knows what's going on and what action the board is going to take, is a good thing. We've seen tonight what happens when a board attempts to do a switcheroo at the last second, and the public can't comment. Certain people, or maybe just one person, don't like it, because they see the opportunity of mischief. That's what 30 days does. It's not an unreasonable amount of time, and it allows the public to weigh in. Not have this rushed mishmash and basically creating a disordered process that gets baked in whenever you allow last-minute changes. Yes, emergencies can happen, and yes, things come up. But the more steps you take to thwart the public's ability to have any type of oversight or even comment on what this board is going to do, you're going to sow distrust. I think it is unfortunate for a number of members on this board recently elected that Commissioner Abel, who did not run under the Radnor Democrat banner, is talking tonight about having more transparency, more accountability. It is similar to the votes that Commissioner Booker talked about earlier tonight, when we talk about videotaping meetings. It's the public having access to the data, should they choose so. The replacement for Lou Clark was talking about, I don't know how many people even look at YouTube. If you want people to have the ability to do it, you don't care about those numbers. What is important is its openness and notice. I'm pretty sure, sir, pretty sure, even though I didn't follow your campaign, you didn't run under openness with the parenthetical next to it, provided enough people care about it. That's not how openness works. It's about giving the public, should they wish, the opportunity to learn about the issue. And I think Commissioner Abel's proposed resolution, which he is talking about within the confines of the proposed resolution, which is a nice departure from the behavior of Mr. Larkin on the previous agenda topic, is something that will, strangely for Mr. Abel, because he's a Republican, speak to the Radnor Democrats' masthead. Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment? Hearing none, is there any staff comment?
Yes, Mr. President. The issue here about 476, I don't believe any taxpayers' money or any taxpayers' dollars were involved, because if there was, that would have had to have come before the Board of Commissioners. So I find that quite interesting, the distortion of the truth on that. So I find that very interesting. The other topic is, I'd probably just going to keep it right at that. Oh, the donation of Penn Medicine. You know, Penn Medicine, it's interesting when you do your homework to see where certain people donate their money to. You do a lot of homework and research of where that goes. And Penn Medicine donates towards veterans groups and first responders. They do not give to operating funds. They give to those two sweet spots. The request was for $1 million. They came that night with $250,000 towards a park to invest money into. So I guess the message is, we should turn those dollars back, and we should go to the taxpayers to fund those types of improvements. I don't like to see that. One is the veterans have tried hard for years to try to raise that money for that park. I thought that was a good thing to do, is to invest into that park. As you are aware, probably maybe not, there are a lot of young families moving into that neighborhood that would utilize that park. So I think it's well worth the investment to put into that park for $250,000. And I'm pleased that they were able to make that donation, and we should be very proud of that investment into that park. So I'm not one that's going to turn money away from them. And it would be nice to be able to hear those types of concerns and not out here in public. But thank you very much.
Is there any additional staff comment?
Yeah, I have a couple of observations about the resolution, and then I'd like to, I'll start by clearing up the accusation that there's somehow bid splitting going on at the administrative level, that we're taking projects and splitting them up into bite-sized pieces that are less than $7,500 to circumvent the approval process. I, that does not happen. Not only would we not accept that as professionals, but we are audited by independent auditors. And if you've had any familiarity with financial audits, that's one of the biggest things they look for. They take our entire vendor list, and they look for sums of money paid to those vendors, and then they test the transactions against those vendors to ensure that that kind of practice is not happening. So I, I want to set the record straight on bid splitting right now. That does not happen. With regard to the change orders, tonight's agenda is evidence that we do bring those change orders to the board. They were on the consent agenda. We spent quite a bit of time at the beginning of the meeting talking about them in detail. So not only do they describe them in detail in the public packets, but then during the meeting, we spend more time going through them, item by item. So the change orders, more than $7,500 are making it to the Board of Commissioners for your review and approval. And then the last observation is that there's references that suggest that there's some difference between the township and the Board of Commissioners. So if, if this is intended to be passed, that, that kind of language should be cleared up, as the Board of Commissioners are part of the township. So if there's directives coming at administration, it should be very clear as to who those directives are going at. And that by referring to the township as something, some group other than the Board of Commissioners is, is quite frankly, pretty argumentative. We are all the township. We are all working and doing our best for the township. And to suggest otherwise, or to try to draw some battle line in a resolution like this, is not helpful.
Is there any additional staff comment? Is there any commissioner comment?
I'll just say, I get the spirit of this, Commissioner Abel, and I understand why you want this. I will vote no on this, because I believe that this is more of a knee-jerk reaction to what happened, and we are just stating things, for the most part, with the, just restating the charter. And I get why you're doing it, but to make a resolution every time there's an issue, I don't necessarily know if that is going to stop a future problem. So I get it. Thank you. Thank you for bringing to the attention of the board and the community. I know that you put that out on social media, but, but I will be voting against it. But I do want to commend you for, for your transparency on that issue.
Is there any additional commissioner comment?
I, I think I have a question. So I don't know if this is for you, Commissioner Abel, or maybe somebody on the staff. But the difference that it would make in the charter, to me, is reading that it's building in the 30-day comment period from what is already in the charter. So I'd like to just kind of play that out in the day-to-day business of the township. If that would be, I guess, maybe for you, Mr. White, if that would be onerous, or, you know, what, what level of burden would it be on making financial decisions for day-to-day operations? Or, or, you know, or if it wouldn't, to allow for that 30-day for comment? Just like to play that out a little bit.
Well, honestly, the 30-day, most of the projects that ultimately get approved by the board take a lot longer than 30 days to get through the approval process. In some cases, there's projects we spent years on. We had the Tap Trail earlier. That, that's going on six years. So, and this is just my, my opinion, I, I'm not sure the 30-day requirement really is that, that big of an issue, because most projects, most projects, and if it, if it's a policy set by the board, then all projects are getting that kind of level, that level of time and discussion over multiple meetings. And, and again, just bear with me a second. For, for a project that's over 25,000, we're coming to the board and asking for permission to go out to bid. If it's a large project, a lot of the ones that engineering oversees, we're coming out, we're coming to the board to ask for permission to go out to bid just for the design. And then we get design costs back, and then we review the design. And then the larger project is considered and approved by the board after we go out to bid. So it, there is time built into these projects. Maybe the methods of communication could be improved, if there's other means to, to make sure we're touching the right people with the projects. We'll cer, we could certainly look at that. But in terms of public vetting, I know we've talked a lot tonight about the one tree clearing, but in all other projects, I think we're meeting this already. So I, I don't think it would be overly burdensome to, to put that kind of information up on the website, or else it makes it more transparent.
Well, and I don't, I don't intend for this to be every project over $7,500. I intend it to be every project that is pushed forward by the township manager, who has a $7,500 limit. So the- So the, again, the Penn Medicine donation that was authorized to the park, this board should have voted on how that $250,000 is used. So this is to capture not resolutions, not policies that we pass. It's to prevent the other types of financial authorizations and appropriations that we have not even discussed. And quite frankly, no neighbor had an opportunity to weigh in on that before it was presented to the board.
Just real quickly on that, Mr. President, if I could. Just, the township manager has authority to spend up to $7,500. Anything over that has to come in front of the board. So any monies that are spent, including the donated money, it's going to have to be something that's approved by the board. Alls we've done at this point is accept the money. They donated it for that specific project, as the township manager pointed out. So if there's a reaction to that specifically, then board action on returning the money would probably be the next step.
So that money has not been spent towards that project?
It has not.
No.
And any things would have to be approved by the board. Now, that would be something that the board then should probably come out with a policy, because Tammy gets donations for her programs, and some of those are bigger numbers that she gets. So the board should say that anything over $7,500, the board should approve for programs and events and activities, because sometimes she gets good sponsorship for a number of the events and programs that she has. So if the intention is to lower the dollar amount she may get for sponsorships, then that may happen.
But if I... Just to be clear on that, that if there are expenditures even for recreations programs that are over $7,500, they're coming to the board for approval.
That is correct. Things that come up, like the Wayne Business Association may ask Public Works that they're getting extra Christmas decorations, like wreaths and banners that they're going to put up. So they may ask Public Works to, if we would like to put it up. So there may be some expenses there. So we may tell them, hold on that, and bring it in front of the board for you to decide if we can hang those up. Usually that'll come something where it's, I'll say that's okay to put up, or be able to do to help others out.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment?
No. My question, and Commissioner Borowski pointed my nose to it in the charter, was around disaster funding and emergency preparedness-type things. And clearly, the charter says that that is a different category in terms of emergency spending. So that was my concern with this.
And if we do...
I do not want you to be hampered in terms of, obviously, you know, disaster and stuff like that, but clearly, the charter provides for that.
And if we do, we bring that to the board then, right after that event occurs?
So I understand, you know, we all are, I think, upset and perplexed by the situation at 476. And, you know, we're looking for perhaps some answers, and we're looking for ways to ensure something like this doesn't happen again. And I think it's the responsibility of the board to work with staff and manage staff to meet those expectations. And I don't think that we do that by resolution. So I believe that much of what is in here is addressed in the charter. And if we have staff that is following what the charter says, then everything is fine. So I will not be supporting this, because I believe it is redundant to the charter.
And I will second that. Having just reread the charter again right now, and in executive session prior to the meeting, I also will not be voting for it for the very same reasons. I think that it's covered in the charter, if we're following it and we're doing our due diligence. And most importantly, if communication between township staff and the board on things like this is taking place, then we're covered.
Is there any additional... Oh, sorry.
Sure, one more thing. You know, I think that I'm glad to hear that it wouldn't affect sort of the operations. But I think what Commissioner Abel is hoping to address with this isn't done exactly here, but I would be very interested in working on sort of a gift acceptance policy and, you know, review how large gifts and sponsorships are received by the township and where the Board of Commissioners sits in on that. So I would look forward to maybe working with you on that.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails for lack of majority. Ordinance number 2020-07, introduction amending Chapter 262-3 of the Radnor Township Code, zoning by revising notice provisions prior to towing of vehicles from private property requested by Commissioner Abel. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Abel, could you lead us in?
Yeah. So President Larkin mentioned this issue in his Commissioner comments earlier this evening. For those not aware, a few weeks ago, there was, well, there was several incidents at the private parking area, the private parking lot next to the new wine and spirits store on Lancaster Avenue. Several residents had their vehicles towed. And, you know, when you hear that and you see that, first, you know, we live in a small community. We rely on our small businesses to thrive, not only for their success, but for the township's success. You know, we reap the benefits of good, small businesses. So, you know, we don't want this stigma that if you come to Radnor, you're going to get your car towed. I went out and looked at it. The signs were a little vague as to when you could park there. So could you go to the store and leave? You know, could you go to the store, and then you had to move your vehicle? But the most alarming thing to me was, you know, these incidents, I believe, happened on a Friday or Saturday. I went out there on Sunday, and the owner of the tow service was across the street just monitoring the parking lot. I went out there on Monday. The owner of the tow service was just walking the sidewalks and, in my mind, waiting for vehicles to park, for the owners of the vehicles to leave their vehicle. And if they did not go into the liquor store, then they would be towed. Now, there's several parties in this, in these circumstances. There's the property owner, who I don't believe did anything wrong in this situation. There's the towing company. There's the owners of the vehicles, and then there's the township. I believe the latter three, we all have a role to play where we can better the situation so we don't allow predatory towing in Radnor Township, because it's not going to be good for the township, and it's not going to be good for the small businesses. So just, you know, long story, but the idea that I'm trying to bring forward is just a minor change to the resolution, to the ordinance, where currently, the towing company has an hour after a vehicle's towed to notify the police department of the vehicle information. I would like to see that prior to the vehicle being towed. That way, the police department has the information. So if a resident comes out and they see their vehicle's towed before they've called it in, they know exactly where it is. You know, residents should not be parking in private parking lots. However, again, I don't want predatory towing. So the second part of this is if there are multiple cars being towed within a 24-hour period from the same lot, the towing company has to identify the lot. So the police department has an opportunity to go out there, and if they can determine it's predatory towing, put a stop to it. Again, we don't want a half dozen residents being towed in one evening. And, you know, I'll submit for the record a Delco Times article from June 15, 2014, where Police Superintendent Michael Chitwood of Upper Darby, I believe he's since stepped down from that position, talks about the tow squad, who's the same company who has the contract here in Radnor Township. And his quote is, "Township residents and out-of-towners come to 69th Street for concerts or shopping and look for parking," Chitwood said. "The lot is posted, but what tow squad does is put a spotter on the second floor and watch where they go. If they don't go into McDonald's, the vehicle is towed." You know, we've got to prevent that type of activity from happening in Radnor Township. Otherwise, we're going to feel, it's not going to be good for everybody involved.
Public comment?
This is two agenda items in a row where they are described and introduced actually as drafted. Again, a departure from some other behavior earlier in the evening. To Commissioner Abel's point, and I did follow this, Commissioner Abel has very, very good outreach to his constituents, which includes me, in terms of letting people become aware of this particular issue. I think that there is something distinctly uncivil of the concept of somebody coming to Radnor and having their car taken from them, and there being an unreasonable delay in terms of finding out where that car may have gone to, which seems to be one of the underlying graviments of Commissioner Abel's proposed resolution. I would imagine that if somebody is upset about their car being gone, and we can certainly think up a lot of different hypotheticals as to why they might need quick access to their car, we would like to encourage them to call Radnor Police immediately, and for Radnor Police to be able to immediately provide them with some information lest they believe their vehicle is stolen or something else has occurred. And this is a very, very, very minor adjustment, which I think will create increased civility in Radnor Township. Civility, civility. Where have I heard that word before? What party's masthead does that word come under? I would think...
Please focus on the issue, Mr. Sherry.
Mr. Larkin, the fact that you get angry and want to editorialize does not change the fact that I'm commenting on the motion, and that I think that it has to do with civility. Interrupting me is uncivil. Stop it!
Please focus on the issue, Mr. Sherry.
No. You focus on trying to refrain from being nakedly partisan. It's annoying, okay? There's nothing wrong with this ordinance. It promotes civility. It should be considered acceptable by the entirety of the board, not just the people who may have Commissioner Abel's same-party name. I am not one of those people, incidentally, for whatever that's worth. It shouldn't mean much of anything. But a lot of the votes going on tonight seem to have a partisan bent to it, and it is unfortunate. Thanks.
Is there any additional public comment? Is there any staff comment?
I think both Superintendent Flanagan and I will have some comments. I understand the issue that went on out there. We've dealt with this particular tower. This particular tower has sued the township on at least one occasion several years ago. I think what is being missed is towing... This is a private tow. This is not a, what's called a duty tow. This is a private tow on a lot that's posted, that says you shouldn't park here or you will be towed. There's some federal law implications, believe it or not, dealing with towing and what municipalities can regulate. So I've got a concern about pulling the police into a private towing situation before the car is towed, which means that that car owner is going to look for the police to intervene in a situation where it's been properly posted. So I don't think there's any, you know, that that's being violated. So that, and Chris can speak to that. The other part of this is that I got a concern with, there's no definition of predatory towing. What you think's predatory towing might be different from what I think's predatory towing. I know this, you know, I know it happens, and I, you know, I'm familiar with it, but we got to, we have to define it somehow before we start regulating it. We can't just leave it in the eye of the beholder. So I've got some concerns about moving forward with this. You know, there is some federal law implications. There's transportation statutes on the books. Municipalities get sued for interfering with commercial towing. I don't think we want that with this situation. And as I understand it, it's been resolved with all the parties involved, at least at this point.
So this situation's been resolved? I mean, the idea is that we're going to prevent the next situation from occurring. It could be at this lot, it could be at a different lot.
But, you know, an ordinance if you can't enforce or unenforceable, it's... An ordinance that's unenforceable, you know, and may expose the township to some liability that we don't need. If it gets resolved the way this was resolved, if the next time, if the manager, whoever, and the superintendent deals with it on that type of a basis, it gets resolved, then we don't need to get into this. So, I mean, they're my concerns. I know Superintendent...
So I don't think anybody really... We get to meet the residents that Commissioner Abel is watching out for in the stewardship of this. We do have some concerns. The definition of predatory towing, to me, compromises police officers in reference to the private property. The owners of that facility had a well-posted lot and felt that they, their business was being damaged. For us to get involved in that, I would want to spend some time with the attorney here, just going over to make sure our rules were very clear, what the sanctions were and what they was or are. But I am very concerned about trying to determine the way this is written, what predatory means. They do notify us. I agree with Commissioner Abel that the sooner they notify us, the best for the resident. And I also believe that we had one problem, and it really dialed into one group's behavior. The ordinance does cover us, that they do have notification, and most of the situations we're able to work out. We have very few complaints. But I would just like to see a little bit of time defining that so that the police don't find themselves in a precarious situation trying to regulate a private property issue.
And I'm okay if there's agreement that we refer to Solicitor Rice and ask him to put the language together defining predatory towing. You know, according to this article in 2014, Upper Darby saw it as an issue. They took action, and they've resolved the problem through ordinances. So, you know, not asking to recreate the wheel, if other townships are doing it, you know, we may want to look at what they've done.
Yeah, I'd like to look at that and see what they've done there.
Yeah.
That's what I was about to ask for. Can we get a sense of the board as to sending this to Solicitor Rice to propose amendments to our existing towing ordinance that are consistent with the spirit of what Jake has proposed, but that keep us on the right side of the federal law?
I would... I would. I just have a few additional questions for Superintendent Flanagan. My first question, Chris, is what, if anything, what additional resources, what additional burden does this ordinance, as it's written, put on the police department in terms of logging, handling the phone calls, notification with residents, dealing with the various aspects of the 24-hour? And I don't know. Does it put any additional burden on you in terms of handling this as written?
We document the respective toes as it is now, Commissioner. So this individual in particular in this lot, they had to call us an hour later, so the same amount of work would be done.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
And do you have... There was a mention about it becoming a police issue. Is there any issue about a notification coming, you know, right at or after the tow versus the hour window that they've gotten? I mean, I do agree that if you've just run into a shop, and you come out and your car's gone, probably first call is the police. So is there any issue that you're seeing about that, moving that notification to upon towing, or, you know, immediately after the tow?
I think we would all agree, the quicker we have information, within reason, the better. So, you know, I do agree that the sooner the tow agency... That was written, because some of the tow agencies have different locations. You know, if they're in the brimmar section, the duty toes have to be, have a yard within the township. So those are emergencies, like a car crash or a disabled vehicle. They have to respond in a certain amount of time, and they have to have a yard in there. These different agencies can do different things, because it's a private tow. It's not as regulated by us. As a professional response, we document who they are, make sure they are registered with the township, they have proper signage, and then once they tow the... with the township, they have proper signage, and then once they tow, they tow the vehicle. The earlier we know to help a resident get back to their car or visitor, the better it would be. I will say that.
So, I just have a question. I think we can maybe hopefully remove the word predatory and end this once and for all, and I would see if Commissioner Abel would be interested in doing this as well as John Rice, if we could do this. So, anytime that a company has towing in their lot, they would need to have, so when you have that contract, we're having ABC Towing tow your car if it's parked illegally. ABC Towing can't just sit there waiting with binoculars for you to leave. It would need to be either the business owner, so upon that contract, the business owner would be allowed to call it in, maybe a manager would be allowed to call it in, and maybe a, you know, the property owner, the business owner, and then people, appointed people in that business. So, that would take all the, I'm sitting here waiting because it's a slow, it's a slow day and I'm just going to stalk this yard, waiting for somebody to, you know, for someone to, you know, buy their bottle of wine on their way out. And this also applies to condo units, et cetera. Someone makes a quick stop, they park in someone's spot because they can't see it, it's late at night, they get their car towed because this guy is parked in the wrong spot and they didn't park in the visitor's spot. So, it should be up to me, the property owner or the renter saying, hey, you're not supposed to park there. It's been an hour, I'm going to go call it in to get a towed, as opposed to just having someone, that is predatory, but then you just take that, you take that out.
How are you going to regulate, monitor all that?
No, so how are you going to monitor? So, if I call and say, hey, that guy's parked illegally, that's great. So, on the slip when they tow it, this person called it in and this person is on that contract that he's allowed to call it in.
So, we're putting ourselves in, Sean, I mean, this is a contract between- Sean. This is a contract between the owner and the towing company, so we're inserting ourselves into that private towing contract. That's a problem.
Do we insert ourselves into private stuff all the time?
Let's see if there's a definition for predatory towing. You know, let's look and see. I'd like to see what Upper Darby did, what he did up there, and let's see if it's been challenged and litigated. I mean, a lot of municipal regulations have been litigated and they've all been in federal court, because the state doesn't have a whole lot of jurisdiction either.
The state doesn't, but it's just saying that someone has to, look, if that's your business model, that you got a great parking lot and people are going to park for free and you kind of deal with the tow company, hey, for every tow, you know, I get 50 bucks, that's fine if that's your business model, but that's probably most, it's not most people's business models around here. So, having someone sign off, I think, makes the most sense. Having, having, having someone with a stake in the game sign off, so you know, look, they're accountable. You're holding somebody accountable because these tow truck drivers are, as that-
Is there currently any law against the activity that was taken by this, this particular tow truck driver? I mean, is there anything that says that he owns his own company, which is to tow cars? And is there anything that says he can't sit at a hotspot where he knows people park illegally and earn his living that way?
Not, not that I'm aware of, but I'm-
I mean, it caused problems that he did it, but he wasn't violating any law-
Right, not that I'm aware of, but-
-to build his business. I think what we're trying to do is make sure that there is some regulation against people doing that in our community.
If we can prohibit it, that's what I want to be able to determine.
I understand. Thanks.
I mean, John, if, I mean, we tell people that they can't plant bamboo, I think we can say you need the business owner or the property owner to make the phone call and sign off on something before you rack up a $450 bill and Uber down there and you're, you know, kids-
So, this meeting ends in two minutes. I'm going to suggest, is there a sense to the board to send this to John Rice for further review and comment, and he can bring it back to us at the next meeting? I'm hearing a consensus on yes. I've spoken with a number of you privately about this issue, and I know that this is not something that we're looking to have die in committee, so, John, I'd be grateful for your thoughts sooner rather than later. Not going to make a motion to extend the meeting. Heads up, I'm not going to vote for it, but is there a second?
Second, we have people that we've paid engineers sitting here waiting a fair amount of money, so I would hope that we can hear what they have to say in regards to the County Line Road Quarter stuff. So, I would ask that we've paid our engineers a lot of money to be here. Let's not have to pay them twice.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Nay. I am apparently the new John Nagel. Motion passes five to two. Moving to reports to the standing committees of the board. Are there any reports?
So, I just want to quickly congratulate the Radnor Memorial Library and the Friends of Radnor Memorial Library. The Friends were able to, through their book sales, donate $25,000 to the library, which I think is commendable. And also, the Friends are looking for members, so if anyone's interested, you can visit their page via the Radnor Memorial Library website. And also, the elves for the shelves run. They saw, I think, if I remember correctly, about a 75% increase in participation and funds raised, around that, I think, funds raised. And they had a very successful event back in December. They just reported out on it at our last meeting, which was two weeks ago. And they should be commended for growing that event and continuing to find new and exciting ways to promote the library and fundraise for the library as well.
Any additional reports? New business, Radnor Accessibility Committee Board Briefing.
Hey, I will be quick on this one. I just wanted to advise the board. So, about a month or so ago, I had, was approached by a resident who is one of my constituents, who is very interested in accessibility issues for those who may be disabled in our township. And he proposed at the time and reached out to also Dr. Winters from the League that we perhaps meet and discuss how we might go about forming a Radnor Accessibility Committee. After I spent the night riding around on a fire truck with Chuck Madden as Santa Claus, he, I asked Chuck if he would participate as well, because Chuck has a special ed background. He has dealt with students who have varying levels of disabilities, and I thought he would be an excellent resource. So, I just wanted to make the board aware. We sat down and met, I guess about two weeks ago, was it, Dr. Winters? With, and I also shared this idea with Mr. Zankowski, and we sat down and kind of talked about myself and the resident and Mr. Madden, talked about what this might look like, who might be on it, who you might want to include, what are some of the issues that might be addressed. And certainly, I think, one of the issues that could have been addressed was the special purpose parking, the handicap parking spaces that we dealt with tonight. Does this become an advisory group of people who are well-versed in these issues to help and support when these things come about? I know that we made the changes up at, in the parking in North Wayne based on residents coming forward and sharing their concerns. So, it's very preliminary. I just wanted to make the board aware of it. If anyone would like to join us, we don't, I told the group that I would bring it here to the board, make everyone aware, and then we'll set up maybe another meeting to kind of continue to put together the framework and see what this might look like. And then I'd like to involve the staff and get staff input and then perhaps create some sort of resolution or something for the board to consider creating a committee that deals with these issues. So, I just wanted to know if anyone's interested and wants to join us in putting this together, please, I can make, let me know, and I'm glad to include you in our next meeting. And then, but whatever happens or whatever this comes from, it will come back to this board for consideration. So, I just want everyone to know.
Discussion of Montrose Traffic Signal and Shared Costs with Lower Marion Township. Sean led us in in the commissioner comments, so, Moira, why don't you get us started on the new business section?
Thank you. So, I started attending the public meetings as a citizen before I became even a candidate. I live right off of County Line Road. And additionally, have had a couple of meetings and phone calls with our commissioner in Lower Marion, Scott Zelloff. It's my understanding from Commissioner Zelloff that Lower Marion has put into the budget $260,000 in order to start this project. The traffic study, which you can find on the front page of the Radnor website, lays out a lot of different pieces to this project, a lot of recommendations. There were public meetings and based on response from some of the residents and concerned citizens, there was some tweaking of it. So, it's my understanding, and Sean and perhaps staff can help me with this, is that there is a proposed stoplight at Montrose that would allow traffic slow, to slow traffic and pedestrian crossing, and that there's also a flashing light that would be alerting people driving east that the light that sits in front of the McDonald's at Lancaster is red or green, because there have been some accidents as people take that curve and find stopped cars. So, those were the two items on the list that were identified as priority and a good place to start. And I know that our neighboring township has already put the funds in their budget for 2020. And, you know, Sean, I'll kick it to you, but I would love to see this become a funded project in our township. Currently, it sits on our list of capital projects and it's unfunded.
Sean, you're up.
So, thank you, Moira. So, yeah, so this is, what, three townships, two counties, and it's very dangerous. Not only are we, and I spoke to the chief about this, not only are we looking for a light at Montrose, we're also looking at some kind of semi-raised island, we'll say. So, it's a right turn only in and a right turn only out on Roberts. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner, if you wish, Leslie Salisbury's here from Gilmore Associates. She has a very brief PowerPoint that she would talk about, the three items you just spoke of, Roberts Road, right in, right out, the county line at Lancaster, and the traffic signal, if you wish.
Well, she's been waiting all night, so let's hear what she's got to say.
Ian, if you could make sure the laptop comes up on the screen, please. The two-minute PowerPoint, I'm confident you can do it.
Well, you already gave me a little introduction, so I can skip over some things.
We asked Leslie not to do the entire study, just those three options that were spoken about.
Yes, so circled on the end there is Lancaster, then Montrose, and then Roberts. Montrose and Roberts right now are existing stop-controlled intersections, and Lancaster is a signalized intersection. These are actually listed in order that both Lower Marion and Radnor discussed in order of priority with Montrose being the most important. Before we proposed a signal at Montrose, we looked at both Montrose and Roberts. Like I said, they're right next to each other. They're both existing stop-controlled intersections with free-flow movements on County Line Road. We prepared traffic signal warrants at both the intersections, and they actually both warranted a signal, so then we had to look and see which would be the better location for it. The crash data that we got from PennDOT in both police departments actually was the highest throughout the entire study with all 10 intersections included, so we knew there was a big issue here. We had talked about putting it at Roberts Road because there are signals at Roberts and Lancaster, and then Roberts and Conestoga to the south, but then we realized that the backups that are occurring on Conestoga block Roberts Road, so it would be ineffective to put a signal there because during peak hours, no one would be able to actually reach the signal. So, by putting it at Montrose, hopefully, we can pull congestion off of Roberts and also provide a more centralized location for both pedestrians and vehicles to cross County Line Road with a protected movement there. So, we proposed the signal to be at Montrose. That would include crosswalks on all legs with ADA-accessible ramps, push buttons and hand-man signals. The anticipated cost for that, including construction contingencies, engineering, would be $530,000, and then, as someone mentioned, the Lower Marion split with that, so that would be around $265,000 for both Radnor and Lower Marion.
Just a couple of questions. Moira, you want to go first?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think for that signal in the original study, it was at $300,000, and that would be a 150 split, which is what-
I can answer that, Commissioner.
...Lower Marion based it on.
So, they, in talking to their manager, he told me they had $265 budgeted or $200-some-thousand budgeted. So, we took the Gilmore price, which was for construction only, and we had to add on what we don't have yet, which is a design proposal. On top of that, there would be the actual construction costs plus design plus contingency. In that contingency is a little high because we don't know for sure if we may not need an easement for a signal box or something like that.
So, first of all, is any of this eligible for grants before we?
We had talked about that from the beginning, but then it was my understanding, once we met with both townships, that they wanted to move forward with this.
Okay. And where are we? So, the other issues, and there's two major issues. Again, it seems that sidewalks in Radnor Township, the grading is so low that that's one major issue of making, I don't know if you can make the residents raise the sidewalk, but that, residents are getting hit and I get calls, I get calls and I see pictures on Facebook. One person who just photographs every accident, and there's usually two a week. But I don't want to do this twice. I don't know if we do other areas of the County Line Road report where we make that four lanes into three lanes with a large center lane. Is that going to have any effect on this stuff? Like I said, I don't want to put up a light and then it's moot for some reason because we made another change. So, how does this, how does this fit into a larger plan of the whole County Line Road Quarter?
So, you're talking about the restriping the entire quarter to then provide one lane in each direction with a center turn lane, and then there would be more spacing from the sidewalk to that travel lane.
And possibly a bike-
Yes. So, that was in our study. That was an item that really wasn't of interest or high priority because it's such a high cost. And to implement that through the whole corridor, and in addition to that, because of the difficulties you have at the two five-point intersections, you can't extend it the full length, so you'll be picking it up and then dropping it off again. And I think that when we had this discussion, they said, all right, well, let's put the signal in, that's the most important thing. And, you know, later on, it wouldn't be, like, we could order the mast arms for the signal so that if the alignment were ever to change, sorry, to change, that it wouldn't, you know, require any changing of the signal equipment. It would just be a restriping or a re-timing.
And then that pedestrian stop where the hand is up for 10 seconds, that would be a four-way stop or a two-way stop?
So, if it was a signal, the pedestrian movements-
It's a full stop for all four?
Well, no, so it wouldn't be an all pedestrian phase. It would just work so that if people are, if County Line Road has the green, then you could cross both the north or south Montrose legs with traffic.
So, you still have to watch that you're not going to get hit?
Yes.
It's not a full-
So, typically, unless there's, and Damon, you could maybe speak on this, but unless there's a special case where it's warranted, you can't have an all pedestrian phase?
Typically, you would have those at the intersection of Pike and Lancaster.
Yeah, like by Villanova.
That's typically why that all pedestrian phase or-
So, like at Villanova, there's an all pedestrian phase where they can cross-
Larger intersection.
And actually, when we collected the volumes here, despite all the public comments that we had, the volumes that we collected were very minimal here.
So, is there-
At both intersections. At both intersections.
For pedestrians?
Yeah, so we would have to use that data to even warrant something like that.
Right.
It's just not there.
Well, I think people don't cross there because you can't.
Well, I mean, even, even on the legs of Montrose.
Okay.
Is there any way to slow, I think that's 35?
It is 35.
And people do 55 if we're lucky. Is there any, like, way to, I don't know, you know, I know in the past I've spoken, I've had issues on Lowry's Lane, and the chief recommended something called a pinch point, or I don't, I don't know any of these terms, but how do we get people from not gunning it to that hairpin turn?
So we did look at that. The problem is that the 85th percentile speeds that we collected out there actually reflect the posted speed limit, so it's hard to let, to convince PennDOT to reduce it so much when they, like, that's just written in the language that PennDOT sets out there, that it should be within, I believe, five or 10 miles per hour of the posted speed limit, and they range from 33 to 38, I believe, which falls right around what the posted speed limit is. We did suggest with the implementation of the center turn lane to try and have PennDOT allow us to reduce it to 25 because Lancaster Avenue is 25 miles an hour. But I don't think that that would be possible without the implementation of the center turn lane. But putting in a signal at Montrose will certainly, you know, reduce that stretch between the curve and thereby sometimes vehicles will have to stop at the signal.
And one more question. Could we have, because there's one light there, and then if you go to, is it, I don't know, is it Glenbrook and then Bryn Mawr Avenue, there's like two, bang, bang. Could you put them on some kind of a timer?
You need coordinate, like this signal?
Yeah, like in Atlantic City, for instance.
Yes, so it wouldn't, so Lancaster is its own stretch of signals there, but this signal would be coordinated with the Conestoga-Glenbrook intersection so that you would, you know, avoid those additional doors.
And then by the, the two also by the hospital as well?
Yes.
So those four, I think there's four total, would all be coordinated?
So the three at the far end of the project, Landover, Bryn Mawr, and Lindsay at the hospital.
Uh-huh.
Those are under another, Lower Marion.
That's Haverford, probably.
Yeah, or, well, Lower Marion applied for a grant that they got to coordinate all those intersections, but these were, I guess, Conestoga and Glenbrook wasn't included in that. So we'd also discussed that as a future improvement for the whole corridor. But like I said, this would be coordinated with the adjacent signal so that you wouldn't have that delay.
And I'd like to ask, I'm not sure if it's, if it's you or Mr. Norrisini, but this is the first I'm hearing that we would not apply for grants. I thought that it was very much in the plan to apply for grants to offset the cost.
When we met with Lower Marion last year around budget time, we did discuss grants, and they have openings at certain times. And I think everybody, based on the public concern at the time, and then commissioners was to get the project going as quickly as possible. So conceivably, we could start design, and if there was a grant available, we could apply for it. But, and that's, it's, that's totally at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners, that's not a staff call. So the main purpose of tonight was to kind of either refresh, or if you weren't here, let everybody know what this intersection is. To let you know that Lower Marion is very, very much wishing to move forward, they have hard, you know, they have hard funds budgeted. The way the discussion went was this would be our signal, so we would take, if this moves forward, we take the lead on design, which would be Gilmore doing it. And then the attorney, there are two, there are two solicitors would work out the cost sharing agreement. Obviously, it's 50-50, but how it's reimbursed and all that good stuff. So that could very well be, if this board wishes to obtain grants, we could do that. The thought was, we'd like to try to get it done in this budget year, and depending on the grant windows, I know actually Gilmore is working on a grant proposal for us for the traffic adaptive system up and down through our Route 30 corridor. Depending how the grant windows fall, could very well push the project back. So that, but that's a decision for this board and their board, the other board.
Mr. President, if I may ask, if there, if it is the intention of this board that you would like us to find funding for this, if that was the desire of this board, we will look for that and come back to the next meeting and give you options to fund this project.
Let me suggest, why don't we ask that you guys circulate a memo to the board that just lets us know the, the grants that would conceivably be available and the dates by which they would push that back, and we don't need to have a second presentation on this. We could instead just incorporate that into our final discussion on paying for this or not.
Sure, but this may be moot. Are we going to be able to find a grant that's cheaper than having Lower Marion pay half of it? Are we going to find a grant that's cheaper, that's going to reduce the cost at least 50% for us? Because if not, then we might as well just go forward with the project.
If, if we get a sense of the board, we can look and see if what options are available to you of how to fund this.
You get what I'm saying.
Exactly.
I mean, if we get a grant for $10,000, it's just a waste of our time. If we get a grant for all of it.
But it may stall the project too as well, because there's certain dates.
I mean, the idea is that the, the two townships are committed to sharing the cost 50-50. Any grant is offsetting both of our
Exactly.
Correct.
You know, both of our contributions to the project.
Correct.
So yes, I would like to see what those options are, and we'll take it all under consideration.
In two weeks, we'll be back with him.
Thanks.
May I ask one request of the board? In that two-week period, if the board so wishes to move, I'd like to ask Gilmore to provide that design proposal. We don't have that at this point because the project was never funded. So that, not something that you would have to act on next week or ever, but just so we know, if you say, hey, what will a design phase of this cost? I'll be able to tell you that, if that so pleases the board.
Is there any objection?
No, I'd like to see that. Thank you.
I'll give you some quick information about the grants. The next PennDOT grant would be like the early grant, which is typically due at the end of, I believe, June, early July. And if you did receive that grant, you probably could not start construction to probably the following year because it would take some time to award those grants. If those grants are typically awarded, maybe six to eight months after they are actually applied for.
Thank you.
Did you want to hear about the other two or?
Yeah.
Do you want to answer?
So this is Lancaster. Right now pedestrians are permitted to cross here, but it's not ADA compliant, so the proposed improvements here would be new ramps, pedestrian push buttons, hand mans, the high visibility crosswalks. And then in addition to that, as you're approaching Lancaster, there would be the red signal ahead warning so that motorists can be alerted that they need to come to a stop if the signal is red. And then the other direction, turning off of Lancaster onto County Line, we would improve the curve warning signage. I know that the crash data indicated that there were some incidents that occurred there. I know Arthur comes in right at that curve, so further delineating that might prove to be helpful. Those costs, again, construction contingencies, engineering would be around $175,000. And then, any questions about that? And the third is the Roberts Road, right in, right out. So this kind of goes hand in hand with the signal. Because that cross track of traffic is occurring, we want to prohibit that from happening now that we would have the signal and they have a protected movement to cross County Line. We would want to prevent that from still happening at Roberts. So we had, in the report, there's a bunch of different options, but I think that the best one here would be the concrete medians, because if you use pavement markings or the delineator posts, they get knocked over, people just kind of don't pay attention to it, so. And in addition to that, there would be the ADA ramps, the crosswalks only for crossing Roberts Road on either leg, and those improvements would be $75,000. So those were the, the three that they had discussed.
One more question. All of these sort of discrete projects, as you've presented them, do all elements have to be in it? So not saying that we don't care about ADA compliance, but would there be a way to, you know, take out one piece, lower the cost?
Yes.
You know, just get the flasher, or just get the signal, or, anyway, just, are there anything, are they, do they have to be done as a whole project? Or are there pieces within them?
So installing, correct me if I'm wrong, installing the signal at Montrose would trigger the improvements there. But, but at Roberts and at Lancaster, all of those pieces are separate, so, I mean, if you touch the signal, PennDOT's going to want you to do that, but the curve stuff and the, the flasher are just, you know, kind of safety improvements that we've also suggested. And here, you know, installing the concrete medians could be done right now, so.
The purpose, one of the purposes of the Montrose signal is to get pedestrians across the street safely, so you would want the pedestrian signals, I would think, in ADA
Moving on to old business, is there any old business?
Good evening. Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. Sort of an extension of all of this is if you're coming east on Lancaster and you want to take a left on Airdale, you either, you have to run the red light, either before the light turns, just as it turns, or just as it goes red, because cars are coming in from County Line, cars are coming down Lancaster, cars, some cars are going to take a right on, a left, right on Airdale to go onto the railroad bridge. So there is no way, if you're coming east, unless there's nobody on the road, that you can get to take a left onto Airdale to go onto the bridge, or a lot of people to go to Mom's Organic Market. I spoke to Officer Flanagan, but apparently I have to write a letter to Lower Marion Township because the Lower Marion Township takes care of those signals. I hope that the township will look at it, and I know the signals were set the way they were when Dave Cannon was Commissioner because the ACME closed, and the little old ladies from Garrett Hill who went to the ACME every day suddenly had to trundle up the hill, cross that intersection, County Line in Lancaster, which is just awful, and go to CVS to buy your things. So they had it set so they could come out of the Rosemont Plaza, but it's a situation waiting to happen. It's, it's really dicey if you're going to take a left off of Lancaster coming east. There's just, there's no, what it needs is a left turn signal before everybody else comes tearing down the hill. So that's all I wanted to say.
Cindy Spirtle-Wayne, I'd like to comment on, it's been a long time since I've been to one of these meetings, and I've sat here for five hours, five hours, five and a half hours. And Mr. Sherry's got some good points. I follow the, I follow the order of years past, and it does make, it's no sense for the public to come up and comment on something that's going to be changed later on in discussion with staff and then with the Board of Commissioners. You all asked that your booklets are complete. The presentations made to you by staff are as complete as can possibly be, so you can make decisions. We can't make decisions on our comments, and our comments don't hold any water because we don't have all the facts after your discussions. It's been one of the most ridiculous five hours I've spent sitting at a meeting here in Radnor Township. The stubbornness, the inability to change, the berating that's happened to anybody that's come up to speak at this podium tonight, who's dared to challenge, is something that I hope I don't see again from the Commissioners of Radnor Township. I've lived here a long time, and this is not an evening that anybody sitting behind those computers that y'all are looking at all night should be proud of.
Here we are at the end of the meeting. Dan Sherry, Wayne, Mr. Larkin, a couple of minutes ago, you kind of in a jovial spirit said, I guess I'm the new John Nagel. I agree, in terms of apparent intellect and demonstrable temperament. This is a real shame, what has gone on here tonight, in terms of the way this meeting was conducted. It's a disaster. It really creates erosion of public trust because, as Ms. Spirtle just pointed out, the inability for the public to comment on action taken by the board. It is meaningless if something is merely introduced, and only then can the public comment and then have substantive changes and the public be precluded from commenting. It's got no history in Radnor Township. Zilch. John Rice has been the solicitor here for years. It's always been conducted that way, where you have something introduced, and then you have Commissioner comment and staff comment, and generally then, public comment before the vote. Because the public should be able to comment on things that you speak about up on this dais and what the staff says. For example, the predatory lending issue that Mr. Abel brought up. After Mr. Abel introduced something that was on the agenda, a proposed resolution, and after the public has the opportunity to comment, then and only then, does John Rice crack off at the mouth and say, oh, I got to look into that, I'm not really sure about the definitions. Why? That would have been pointed out by me, should have been pointed out by somebody up here. Why don't you already have those definitions researched, Mr. Rice? What have you done? You knew this was on the agenda, you knew we were going to be talking about it, it's a proposed resolution. Why are you unprepared? Why are you using taxpayer dollars to sit there over there and mutter at Dan Sherry, cathartic as it might be? What's the point of having a solicitor, to do legal research, to be prepared for these meetings, so that there can be a useful dialogue with the public? Not having agendas that are not worth the ink that is printed on them because they can be subject to change. And, Mr. Larkin, I would, I would correlate that to what I think is an underlying issue here, and that is timidity by certain people up on this board. Timidity about being held to account. If you cut public comment off before the board comments, before amendments are voted on, and prevent the public from having their say on the official action about to be voted on, you inappropriately attempt to inoculate yourself against the public having their say, to have input. It's the same type of timidity, I suspect, went into Lisa Barowski coming up with this resolution not to televise the Carfax meetings anymore. I understand that Ms. Barowski, like many other people, it's not unique to her, has problems in terms of oral advocacy. I get it, okay? She is awkward with her words, just like you are, Mr. Larkin, but that's not a reason to turn the cameras off. Just because you might be sensitive to criticism is not a rationale to only allow public comment before any proposed amendments. I had to point that out over and over and over again tonight, how untenable that is. But other, but other than realizing that, hmm, perhaps there might be point here, even though I might have other disagreements with Mr. Sherry, that if I don't let the public comment on something when there's a substantive change that's thereafter made, it's going to erode public trust, you stuck to your guns and then babbled about you and Lisa and John Rice apparently having some meeting, maybe later, maybe to discuss it. Again, how's that appropriate? How is that somehow permitted under an executive session exception, to the extent you were talking about potentially excluding four other board members? Why also in terms of this happening?
Have one minute.
Yeah. In addition to being timid, Mr. Larkin, you're very time-sensitive. I would urge you, as being one of the most prominent elected officials in Radnor Township, to understand at a minimum when you appear to be going down a road that is difficult to continue, at least to effectively argue on behalf of. You took a position a couple of weeks ago, saying you shouldn't censure John Nagel, you personally, even though he cracked off in support of Phil R. at a sentencing hearing, because you didn't want to be that type of person. That was an untenable position. Kindly in the future, limit the opportunities you have to continue to fall into those type of traps that you lay for yourself. Thanks.
Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
It's a moot.
I don't need to hear votes, that is acclamation. Everybody out.